Twenty-two meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh four. This is the regular meeting. Um, I'm going to ask Councilmember Montero to do the invocation today. And Councilwoman Valentine, uh Mayor Proton Valentine to do the invocation, to do the pledge of allegiance.
If it's everybody, please bow your head. Dear Lord, thank you for this twenty twenty-two. Uh, thank you for all the things that we accomplished in twenty twenty-one. We opened this first meeting in January with hope that all of us will do business for our city with integrity, transparency, and God will guide us in our decision to benefit that all residents of Hawthorne. In your name we say amen.
Come on.
Please stand, face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
The pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh Councilman, and thank you Mayor Proton. Mr. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Uh, yes, uh Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Racing.
Here.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Present.
Uh, all are present.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Attorney Kim, you have the next presentation Charter City versus General Law City. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me sh- let me, uh, share the screen here. One second. Give me one second. Okay, um, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna try to make this as brief as possible. I don't, it may be a little bit dry. Um, it's gonna be similar to a college lecture, but I think this is a very important issue to be addressed for the city. Um, it's, I'm gonna start off with some of the basic, uh, steps involved in general law cities such as City of Hawthorne, moving on to Charter City. Uh, then go into a little bit of the foundation and history of General Law City versus Charter Law City. Then we'll step into the advantages and disadvantages of becoming a charter city. Um, so it's, should we or shouldn't we? Ultimately, it's the voters that decide the, uh, the proposed draft charter, uh, at the general election. There are two methods of bringing a proposed charter for the voters. First method, which I don't think the city council will be interested in, is takes two voters, uh, election cycle. And it's more complicated. Basically, it's not complicated, it's just there are more steps involved, takes more time. And that is forming a, a charter commission. A charter commission would have to be, the commissioners would have to be voted by the residents. And the charter commission would have up to two years to come up with a draft charter. And they, at the next, uh, general election, the voters would then had to elect, uh, would have to vote for the charter. Um, this is a process in which a council will not have a say and will not have a vote on the draft charter. The second method is what I think the, um, council members are more thinking in terms of smaller cities such as City of Hawthorne. And that is a council by voting to, um, to direct staff to come up with a draft charter. Um, it can be done through staff or through a committee appointed by city council. Um, that process, um, can be done, um, with a, and, and you know, the city attorney's office don't have the expertise in this area, we would have to rely on consultants to come up with a draft charter, uh, for the voters. But that process takes, involves, uh, two public hearings, uh, that would have to be done thirty days apart with twenty-one days notice for each other public hearing. It would require the draft charter to both the sequel analysis. Then it would have to be placed on the ballot, uh, submitted for ballot eighty-eight days before the November eighth twenty-two general election. So, in order to meet those deadlines, the city would have to come up with a draft charter and sequel analysis at the latest by end of May is that is the timeline that we're looking at. So let's go into the backgrounds of General Law City. Uh, of course, City of Hawthorne is a general law city and it has been since this incorporation. Uh, the authority of a general law city is derived from the powers granted to it by the police power granted under the California Constitution, subject to the general laws adopted by the Californian legislatures. So whatever these, uh, the legislatures, um, they just, uh, come out with a new laws for this, for the state, for general law cities. Cities of general law cities have to comply with that. Charter cities authority is the powers that are not defined or limited by state's general laws, but instead the home rule doctrine applies over the city's municipal affairs. The home rule doctrine reserves to a charter city the right to adopt and enforce its own laws, subject only to the conflicting provision in the state or federal constitution or preemptive state law on matters of statewide concern. And I want you to keep those words in mind is what's municipal affairs. And what is statewide concern is what distinguishes between the authority of general law city versus that of a charter city. And I'm gonna explain more in details in later slides of what these means and how the, uh, the courts interpret the meaning of these things. Um, with respect to municipal affairs, a charter city's powers are defined by the city's own charters, subject only to the limitations of state and federal constitution. So a charter for a city, once a city adopts a charter, becomes its own form of a constitution for municipality that are charter cities. And of course, all laws are subject to the, the limitations set by the state and federal constitution. Although cities charter generally defines its power over, over municipal affairs, the state can encroach on that local authority when a matter rises to a level, level of a statewide concern. For example, recent housing bills, SB nine and ten. Those legislations from Sacramento specifically states that these are matters of statewide concern. And we'll see whether that carries through because ultimately it's the courts that determines whether an issue or law is a statewide concern or municipal affairs. What is a municipal affair? Um, the California Constitution does not define municipal affair, but does set out non-exclusive list of four core categories. Regulations of city police force, establishment of subordinate commissions and boards, conduct of city elections, and the manner in which municipal officers are elected. The task of determining whether a given activity is a municipal affair or one of statewide concern is a case-by-case inquiry in light of the facts and circumstances surrounding each case. And that's for the judicial system to interpret, and I'll explain that in a later slide. Regulation of city police force. In a general law city, the chief is the person in charge of the police department. Charter cities can form it differently. Uh, there's, I think the San Bernardino, City of San Bernardino has a mayor as the person in charge of the police force. And you could have commissions in charge of police force. The establishment of, these others, other categories are self-explanatory. Four-step analysis determine what is a municipal affair. This is a four-pronged test established by a, a Supreme Court decision in order to determine whether, uh, the law is of municipal affair or statewide concern. And the step one of this test is, is there an actual conflict between the local ordinance and the state law? If there is no conflict, there's no controversy, and there's no need to go through the further analysis. Step two is, if there is a conflict, does the local law implicate a municipal affair? Is the local ordinance addressing a local city issue? Step three, if that's the case, does the state law involve extramural concerns that require paramount state control? Even though the issue may address local issue, local city issue, is the state law trying to go beyond its parameters because the issue is so paramount to the overall state? Um, step four, if yes to all the above, the state statute still has to be reasonably related and narrowly tailored to the resolution of the statewide concern. Examples of municipal affairs. Municipal election matters, um, procedures for initiative referendum, recall procedure for adopting ordinance. Uh, for instance, this, as a general law city, the city follows the government code. And we go through two readings and it has to be done through regular meetings when it's adopted. Um, the charter cities can adopt their own method of adopting ordinance. Compensation of city officers and employees, I'll go into a little bit more detail in later slide, but compensation of city officers would include salary for council members. Uh, under general law city, as you know, we have an agenda item, second reading. It's regulated by the government code based on the population and certain fixed, uh, increases that's allowed. As a charter city, you don't have to abide by that government code section. Processes associated with city contracts, I'm gonna go further detail in later slide about RFP process and public works contract and how that's required for general law city but not for charter. Financing public improvements, uh, such things as bond measures where city need to generate funds for public projects. Those are in charter cities, don't have to go by the, the laws as required for general law cities. Making charitable gifts of public funds for public purposes. Those are considered municipal affairs, and as a charter city, you have more leeway. Term limits for council members, land use and zoning decisions with exceptions. Now there are, um, I'll, I'll go into a little bit further later in the slide, but, uh, for instance, SB nine and ten deals with land use, but um, it's even though it's considered municipal affairs, the legislatures have deemed it to be a statewide concern. What is a statewide concern? Whether a particular subject is a municipal affair over which Charter City has authority or a matter of statewide concern over which legislature says authority is a matter of courts to decide on a case-by-case basis. Accordingly, the concept of what is municipal affair is fluid and changes over time as issues of local concern may become a statewide concern. Although the courts give legislators intentions, intent, legislators intentions in this regard great weight, the legislature is neither empowered to determine what a municipal affair is nor to transform municipal affair into one of statewide concern. So going back to, uh, on this case-by-case decisions. Political climates can change over the years, the makeup of the California Supreme Court may change. So what is determined on a case-by-case to be a municipal affair now may change later on as, as climates change and judicial, judicial makeup of the bench also changes. Examples of statewide concern. Um, school systems, traffic and vehicle regulations, licensing, licensing of members of trade or professions, tort claims act against the government entity, the Brown Act, the exercise of the power of eminent domain, affordable housing and other laws. Uh, these are, uh, set of areas of laws that have already been determined to be statewide concern. And for most of these, you could see the logic and reasoning behind it because there is a re, a, a need for uniformity. You can't have different traffic laws and leave it up to each cities to come up with different traffic laws because as you're driving through the cities in the state, you don't wanna have to be learned, to learn each city's traffic regulations and laws. Same thing with licensing of members of trade or profession. You want the same standard across the board in the state, you don't want a different standard, lower or higher, depending on the city that you're at. So for instance, if you think about a doctor or an attorney, you want the same standard, there's a need for uniformity. The advantages of, of going, hold on one second. Advantages of going charter. Form of government. In general law cities such as Hawthorne, a state law describes a city form of government. City of Hawthorne is a city manager form of government. The city manager decides on who to hire as, as the employees and who determine it and run the functions of daily function of the city. In a charter city, you can have different types of form of government. You, you could do city manager form of government, but there are also cities that have strong mayor form of government in which the mayor decides the running of daily running of the city functions and termination and hiring of staff. City elections. In a general law city such as us, we have to abide by the California Elections Code every time there's a municipal election. Charter cities are not bound by the California Elections Code. They may establish their own election rules and dates and procedures. Public contracts. And this is, uh, until we're gonna get in more detail about these public contracts. As you are aware that when we have a public works contract for over five thousand dollars, we have to go through a RFP process and, and the contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Charter cities are not required to comply with that. Um, if the charter city by the charter or the ordinance exempts the city from such statute. Zoning. In a general law city, our zoning ordinance must be consistent with city's general plan. You don't necessarily have to have that with a charter city. Zoning ordinance are not required to be consistent with city's general plan unless the city has adopted a consistency requirement by charter or by ordinance. Prevailing wages is another area where charter city supposedly has more discretion. Um, as you know, prevailing wages can be significantly higher than regular market rate for, uh, labor. Um, from what I heard recently, it could be as much as twenty percent or even higher. In, in general law city, the prevailing wages must be paid on public works project over one thousand dollars. In twenty twelve, the Supreme Court held that prevailing wages by a charter city is a municipal affair. And therefore charter cities don't have to go by the prevailing wage requirements under the, uh, state law. Um, but a year after that decision, the, the legislatures enacted SB seven, and this is how they could get around it, that they would restrict the use of state funding for any project that did not use prevailing wages. Compensation, and this again, uh, the salary for city council is set by population and by the government code section with a fixed increases. Um, the two hours of ethics training is required for both charter and general law city. But in chart, in charter city, the charter may establish the council member salaries, and you're not, uh, required to follow the, the, the government code section. The disadvantages of one charter city. The first disadvantage is the expenditure of time and effort required to formulate a charter by staff or consultants and the city council's input. The expenditures of time and effort required to formulate a charter that covers a variety of com- complex subjects. The cost of professional services in drafting a charter. Again, um, if, if we would have to have a, a follow-up meeting in, in the next council meeting with, as a discussion action item, I'm gonna ask the council member to put that on the agenda and take a vote to whether you wanna direct the staff to look into drafting a charter. Um, that requires consultants, requires sequel analysis and set hearing, public hearings and whatnot, as I explained earlier. Um, it takes, it costs money to do this. And I, you know, I can't tell you exactly how much the consultants would charge for that. Uh, but I, I would presume that it's not some small amount. The time and expense of conducts, conducting an election to consider adoption of a charter. Um, I just took a brief glance at the upcoming election to add a ballot measure is, was in excess of six thousand dollars. Um, so that's not that significant, but in any case, um, anytime there's an amendment to a charter. So if we adopt a charter, voters approve. Later on, we need to amend that charter, we would have to go back to the voters for approval of each amendment. Transition from many years of municipal operations under general law. Uh, as I stated, this City of Hawthorne has always been a general law city. So to transition to a charter, charter city takes, uh, training for staff and takes time for, uh, acclimating to the new charter provisions. It's noted earlier, there is, there's uncertainty that many that may arise for whether a specific matter is one of municipal concern governed by the charter or one of statewide concern governed by statute. Although the, the four-step prong analysis that, uh, that I discussed earlier by presented by Supreme Court, as time change, um, it, it's fluid, so it may change down the line depending on the political climate, what the issues are, the makeup of the bench and whatnot. As such, this could result in exposure to legal challenges if an issue should arise in a gray area where the charter and general law may differ. So this is, if we are to move into charter and we determine, the city determines that this is a municipal affair, that can be challenged. So there is a possibility of potentially more litigation involved as a charter city. The fact that the city would not have the benefit of any new state legislation on matters of municipal concern unless action was taken by the city council to adopt that legislation. So as a charter city, if it involves municipal affair, um, statewide concern is automatically, uh, it applies to charter cities. But if legislatures, uh, draft a new legislation that's, uh, affects municipal affair and it's something that is advantageous to a charter city, the charter city would have to move to adopt that by ordinance or things of that nature. Um. Additionally, city charter may not cover everything. For example, a narrow charter could be adopted to alter elections and compensation. Could also state that city will be subject to planning and zoning laws in the same way as general law city. However, if the charter is narrow only in certain areas, but differs everything else with general law city, you're gonna, there's gonna be questioning by the voters, why are we moving to be a charter city? And you will have certain conflicts. Concerns regard regarding overly flexible charter versus too detailed of a charter. Charter again is a limitation on city council's control over municipal affairs. It's a form of a, a constitution for the city. Overly simple charter gives flexibility to city council, but no guidance nor no notice is provided to the, to the residents or the voters. Overly detailed charter restricts city council's authority and may result in amendments that requires again approval by the voters. And that's also costly because you have to put it on the general election.
Mr. City Attorney, this is your two-minute mark.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna try to rush along. Other potential concerns, the adoption of charter can be divisive in a community depending on the scope of the charter. Also, as the courts review the powers of a charter city, there's a possibility of erosion. Additionally, the legislature still has some tools that is disposable to limit the benefits of a charter by for, it's, for instance, controlling the funding for cities. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Uh, either, excuse me, um, either, uh, Mayor Proton or Councilwoman English, who would like to go first?
All right, I'll go. Um, I, I, um, can you hear me? Yes. I, um, thank you, Robert, that was an absolutely excellent analysis. It gave us a very clear distinction between a charter city and the advantages of a charter city versus, um, the advantages of remaining general law. Um, so I'm, I'm, just makes, just so I'm clear on something. So the laws of a charter city would be preempted only by state laws on matters of statewide concern or the state or federal constitution, is that correct?
Correct. The, the gray area is what is a statewide concern versus municipal affairs.
Okay, all right. And, um, I think you gave a very ex- excellent analysis of why, what, uh, you know, the, 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 uh, cost of, of, of making that change for us. I, um, you know, after, after, after hearing your analysis of it, I'm inclined to think we're probably not in a position to do that at this time, but the, the analysis is excellent and it was worth, worth, uh, worth getting the input. Thank you.
Robert, thank you for the.
Yeah, Councilwoman English and then Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for reporting out, Robert, uh, great report. Could I suggest maybe, um, notifying the City Clerks Association and just asking some general questions with regards to, uh, again, the pros and cons? Um, during my time in training and, you know, receiving my, uh, CMC, um, we had both, uh, you know, participants in our class from charter and, um, and, and the other. Um, and from what I understand, a lot of it is, um, hyster- uh, history, and what I mean by that is like our city is coming up on a hundred. Hyster uh history, and what I mean by that is like our city is coming up on a hundred year anniversary, right? I think, I I think for the most part, we've always been a general law city. I was just curious if you could um. You know. Speak to that, I mean, for the most part, I think a lot of these cities that follow. In in how they're um. Implementing policy and whatnot are based off of the history of their, the makeup of their city. That's that's what I was under the impression, I I rarely heard any cities trying to change their. Their, you know, their charter, so I was just curious if 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 you could just bring back to us.
I just just to let you know that um there have been a few cities that went charter, I I think the most recent is City of Carson. Um uh City of Bell, uh you know, there's a controversy behind how they went to charter.
Yeah.
Um but um just just to, you know, we we brought that up, but just to show the city council that in South Bay. Uh the following cities are charter cities. Inglewood, uh Redondo Beach, Santa Monica, Torrance and Compton. Um Carson, as I mentioned, Long Beach, the city of Long and Los Angeles. Um you know, there are other smaller cities that went that are charter, um such as Culver Cities. Uh City of Industry, City of Glendale. Um so and City of Loma Linda. Um but you know, there are a few cities that did move to charter. Um and I can't, you know, I guess there was some cost involved and I don't know what the motive. Was at the controversy behind City of Bell.
Yeah.
Was very controversial.
Yeah, if if I guess if this is coming, um you know, up upon a a future agenda for, you know, further discussion and. Potential vote, I think, I think at the end of the day, all of that uh is important as to, you know, why. Um do we feel that we need to change and if anything, uh how would this? Assist us or not? Uh some of the other cities that you made mention, such as Inglewood and all these other cities. Um if you follow, there's also been legal challenges with regards to bidding processes. Um to projects and those alike, so um it's something that I think we should really thread lightly. And I think ultimately just additional information is needed and at the end of the day, it's a vote by the people. However, um at the end of the day too, a lot of the people, um the voters of Hawthorne. Tend to look at what the council is doing and for what purpose, so all of that's important. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Montero?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh thank you, Mr. Robert Kim for the presentation. Um it was a clear expl- explanation between the general law and the charter. Um. One question that I have for you is the fact that all our ordinance. Uh has been established long time ago. And we know that we need to do um a tremendous revision of our ordinance, right? Especially the zoning, even about uh parking, draft, all all these. Uh issue that is coming up down the pipe is gonna cost us money, right, to. Hire consultants to create new ordinance and resolution. Uh. For these current twenty first century laws, right? Because uh uh those uh orders has been written long time ago and it doesn't make sense. Uh anymore for our city, especially if we wanna bring uh new business. And there is a lot of restriction there that needs to be redone and and restructured. So when we're talking about cost. It's gonna cost us to do these new orders. And for. For current. Per se. What's going on, but then if we go to this general law city, we would be create a whole new document for the city, right?
If we go to charter city.
Yes.
Yes.
So all 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 those general laws, orders that was created back in fifties and sixties and seventies will throw away. And then we will create our own constitution per se.
So um if you go to charter city, if you become a charter city, you would still have ordinance.
Yes.
So um uh probably at that point, we would need to update the ordinance as well. But I mean, the the ordinance should be updated, but it's just that right now, I I don't know whether we had the the. Staff power to update all the ordinance that we need to update. Um but having said that, yes, that going to charter city does not mean that we get rid of all the ordinance, we could have a charter provision that. That uh adopts the ordinance that is currently existing.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're gonna get rid of them, but I'm just saying that we have to rewrite them uh on the way to satisfy. The current situation. Um so. I I was just debating about if we're going to hire consultants to do all this work. Uh. It's almost like a balance thing that we should look into, maybe charter city even make sense. Uh to the to us and to the world of Hawthorne. Uh because. One thing that is happening in Sacramento. They they taking a lot of. Policy from us, they they coming with all these laws that we have to abide by the state. And 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 even now, you see that the uh some mayors in South Bay are trying to put the uh on the ballot. A constitution right for for the municipalities versus the state, because the state is taking. Uh tremendous effort to take. Uh matters into their own hands and tell us what to do, right? Uh again, like you said, it depend who's gonna be the governor, who's gonna be the legislative body. That things can change and then we will be in limbo if we continue to be a general law city.
Uh definitely, as a charter city, the purpose of a charter city is that you do have more control over municipal affairs. Absolutely agree.
Okay. All right, so it's something to explore. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, give me a second, I mean, so uh I just had a a couple of questions. Um. With with being a charter city. Have any kind of impact in our ability to um. Address economic development desires that we have, so I remember I I I think there was something in the presentation that talked about. Uh zoning uh would be a different experience and so. Um by having that different type of flexibility, will we be able to um I guess. Uh be more flexible or move more move faster. Uh in terms of making zoning changes. Uh that might support some economic economic development desires of ours.
So I I I don't know exactly the specific issues when you're saying economic development. Whether it's just addressing development within the city, I would consider that. I would say that there is a strong argument that is a municipal affairs and it should be within the discretion of the charter. Um there is, the there's a distinction between a draft, a a charter versus an ordinance. If a charter can provide a method as a charter city, a different method of adopting an ordinance, so if this is. Uh if we adopt a charter that specifies that we're gonna. Adopt an ordinance differently than how we've been doing in a more uh expeditious way, I guess there will be more um quicker response. To economic development that addresses just municipal affairs. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it it does, um let's see what other questions I have, um. Let's see, what will be the cost to pursue something like this?
Uh I can't say exactly how much it would cost, um I you know, it's something that. I would have to rely on a, you know, the. A a law firm that we've been using, Richa Watson Richan, they've been. Um the the drafting charters for cities all over the state for years and years, so they have the expertise on this. Um I I don't know if they would have a budget or or a a. A budget for that and tell us exactly how much it's gonna cost, a lot of it would depend on. Uh how extensive of a charter um that the city would be pursuing and is interested in. If, you know, we could just have a charter that says uh we're gonna be charter city and we're gonna abide by the. You know, the general laws that comes out of this state, uh it could be as simple as that. And but the question is then, why would we even go charter? So if we wanted to make, um in my slide, I said that if you make a very detailed charter. That would limit um the the authority of the city council. So if you wanted to amend that in a detailed charter, if you want to amend that, you have to again go back to the voters. So in a detailed charter is a lengthy or charter that uh that would, I'm sure the consultants and. And experts would charge a lot more, but I don't have an exact amount for you, that but I take it it's it's fairly expensive.
Would um be in a charter city give us more control over land use issues, I know like uh one thing. Um. You know, let's say we had some. Um land that we want to reposition for for our for public use or are making kind of um. You know, changes to kind of zoning or something like that, like would that give us a little more flexibility?
Um in terms of, I I don't know in what manner, if in what state laws would be affected by that. Change, um if the state law is for instance SB nine and ten, they already stated that is a matter of statewide concern. Um meaning that they're gonna take away that authority from charter city. I I know there there was a previous mayor from a neighboring city that came out and wants to move for constitutional amendment, it could also be challenged through the courts. And the courts can say, even though the legislatures have deemed this to be of statewide concern. They actually find it to be municipal affair, but that would have to be based on. A specific fact pattern that would go through litigation and ultimately Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court, State Court of. Appeals or State Supreme Court that would have to uh give out a a whether that. That blanket is a matter of statewide concern is actually applicable or not.
How about this, what about the uh the vote that the council made to work with the um the soccer club? Um and and repositioning some of the park for. Uh their use, where a charter city would be easier to kind of move forward with that, that agreement?
Um it depends on whether that is for public use or not, um it it it's questionable whether. Um soccer clubs, training facility is a public use when it's only being used by a. Professional private um soccer club. So that's the question that I would have to um, I guess, get more guidance on, um but. Um it's it's questionable whether that's public use, so when you're dealing with. Uh use of public funds for those kind of purpose, it has to be for public use that charter city has more of uh independence. From the state laws.
Got it, okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Still have a question, uh Councilwoman? We can't hear you.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna wrap this up real quick, um. So, Robert, when we do our ordinances and we do a second reading, they officially become law, if you will, within thirty days. Um there's a lot of uh old um um ordinances and whatnot, it you know. Exactly going back a hundred years, right? And whenever we have an item that we bring before the council, whether it be the thought of a council member, the mayor or anyone. Um obviously, we're looking for past history, past policy, legislation that was passed way back when. And how that read and what it what it says and how we're amending it, so a lot of those amendments happen. Based off of uh the members here, so that's important to keep in mind, it's just not a matter of. You know, taking what was done in in the history in the past and just, you know, consider that it it not valid. So I just wanna assure that, you know, there's still pulmonary processes and there's still historical records that we. We have on uh in our storage and our records that speaks to how our city was ultimately um. Uh charter, at this point, chartered, right? Um and you spoke earlier about mandates, um mandates by the state oftentimes even. Try to put mandates on general law cities, if that's correct, is is it true that mandated? Requirements from the state often happen to both charter and general law?
Yes, so if it's a uh issue, if a new legislation is matter of statewide concern. Then it affects both charter and general law city.
Right.
It's when the issue is a municipal affairs issue legislation by the state. It applies only to general law city and not charter city.
Correct, and that's a come, it's important for our city to have total control, local control. When it comes to um, you know, affairs uh pertaining to the city of Hawthorne and whether or not it's something that. Uh is a good fit for the city of Hawthorne and, you know, there's a lot of. Uh bills and whatnot that comes from the state that oftentimes. We, you know, will send a letter of support or not in support of an item and that's a come oftentimes. I don't support a lot of stuff because, you know, I have to look at the full picture and whether or not that's gonna be something that um. Helps our city or not, so you know, mandates are gonna continue to come down from the state, you know. Um it's important that we remember that and, you know, um just changing up a charter or general law, trying to. Make a fit for a purpose, maybe one or two purposes, doesn't sometimes often assist us. In the full picture, so that's that's my.
No, thank you, Councilwoman, um so I guess I guess I'll put my uh two cents, five cents or whatever it is, ten cents, whatever the phrase is. Um. It appears that, you know, there needs to definitely, can you guys hear me? Yeah, so it ju- just appears that you just really, we really have to take a look. At the cost benefit analysis of moving forward with something like this. Changing what's been like about a hundred years worth of uh general law uh city approach. Uh going to charter, what is the purpose? I mean, I mean, I really don't know where this is originating, I don't know if it's staff or if it's members of the council that are pushing for it or whatever. But there has to be a cost benefit analysis. And one of the ideas that like I kind of initially thought was can we evade? Some of the state mandated uh things that were there to uh ordinances or. Or mandates where they're taking away local control and it and it seems that moving a charge as a to a charter city. Doesn't really uh protect us, doesn't really, isn't an instrument for that necessarily. Um because you said that some of uh you defined it as uh, what what was the phrase that you used? We can't avoid it, we kind of evade any mandates from the state if it's something that is of a. Uh general statewide uh.
Statewide concern.
Statewide concern.
Yes.
So that right away goes away, so I think we really, really gotta seriously take a look if this is something worthwhile. And just really list out the benefits. Because right now, it doesn't seem like they're adding up to uh to too many right now, especially when it comes to that uh you know, state. I think uh I think a lot, all of us have a concern with regards to some of the things Sacramento is trying to impose on me. And by opposing some of these things by uh through our League of California Cities and through the South Bay cog has been something uh good, but. Um. Approaching it this way, it right now doesn't uh, you know, we still take, need to take a look at it and see if it's worth it, so. Um cost benefit analysis, as I said. All right, guys, let's just move on to the next meeting, thank you, everybody, thank you, uh Robert, for putting that together. Um knowledge is power, so at least we get an idea as to. Uh I've been curious as well, so um I appreciate. Your uh breaking this up for us. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three. All remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Eye prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have a discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation. Report and or recommendations. Mr. Mayor, we received uh zero emails regarding public comment for tonight's agenda, we have one speaker tonight for oral communications.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, we have Mr. Ray uh Raymond Verjera, uh Mr. Verjera, you have three minutes.
Uh that's uh Vergara.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vergara, you have three minutes.
Sofia Vergara is my cousin. Good evening, Mayor Vargas. And committee, guys hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor Vargas and committee, guys hear me okay? Uh I hope you guys are well rested and ready to roll up your sleeves and get to work because there's a lot going on in the city. Uh been to Chicago, been to uh. New Mexico and I've seen a lot of things that are done different over there and I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in. What has been happening since I left. Uh the biggest thing I wanna bring to your attention is thirteen three oh three South Inglewood Avenue. Now, if you recall, this is the marijuana store, I know it's in the county. But uh, you know, when it originally opened up, it was clean, it was well maintained, it looks like uh. They were doing a due diligence, but you know, besides the loitering after six P M on Friday all the way to Saturday midnight. Man, this place is the wild, wild west. Lot of activity, a lot of illegal activity going on. And uh, you know, uh uh what bothering us homeowners is. Is that all of a sudden the exterior, you know, of of the place, that there's debris all over the front side and. You know, there's constant trash that collects in the parking lot and uh even this morning, you know, it it looked like an abandoned building. Uh most families are afraid to walk past this horrible uh uh location. Um you know, I'll be more than happy to send you current photos, but it it's it's uh it it's getting out of hand, it it's 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 a dump. And and if we could get some of you guys to go out or make some calls or, you know, get the get the county involved or. I don't know wh- what what you guys have in the ammunition, but please, we gotta do something about this building, the marijuana store. You know, it's unfair that that we hold our businesses on strict exterior guidelines. And and the county is not doing their part, just another example how these dispensaries do not belong in our city nor is nor in 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 the county. Secondly, I wanna bring your attention to code enforcement. I noticed that we lost a lot of staff, what's going on, we need these guys. Code enforcements have been very instrumental with 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 the committees, uh with with a lot of the homeowners association. You know, it's it's refreshing to call and say, hey, this is going on, can you go look at it? You know, Oscar alone can't do it, we need more folks, so you know, if you guys could start placing some ads to replace these people, they're very important. You know, we if we need to make a drive to get money, I I'm all for it, uh I I'll put my money where where my mouth is, that's not a problem. So these two are very simple tasks, I think you guys uh could be able to make some phone calls. And uh I I I wanna make sure that uh, you know, our. Our voice is heard on this because a lot of families are are afraid uh on that corner.
Mister Vergara, you have fifteen seconds.
Anyway, thank you for your time, I hope you guys are ready to get serious and and do some do some good for the for the city of Hawthorne. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night, Mister Vergara.
Thank you, Mister City Clerk, uh Mister City Manager and and Chief, can you guys work together to take a look at that property? If it's licensed and uh. If not, or on top of that, if you can communicate with the our Board of Supervisor uh representative?
Absolutely, we'll follow up.
Yeah, so they can get the sheriffs involved and enforcement if, you know, it's been there, it might be licensed, we don't know.
And I'm starting the thirty seconds, if anybody wants to call in.
Yes, absolutely, okay, that's good, thank you. Okay, sir, we're gonna be waiting these up thirty seconds because there's a time delay um with what you're with what people are. Listening to on uh cable TV and uh people actually seeing this out in the community so they can dial in. Okay, we do have one phone call? Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me, you have three minutes, sir?
Okay, if I break off, sorry about. Uh 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 my name is Ruben Sanchez, I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. Uh I wanted to co- uh the comment in regards to the item twenty. Uh in regards to giving yourself a raise as a council member as the mayor, um I hope you know what you're doing here. Uh because uh it's not, it's not a, it's not a secret that all of you use these offices uh for personal usage. You know, so if anything, I think you guys owe the city some money, cause right now, what, a ten by ten office space in the South Bay? Like about six or eight hundred bucks, but I think everyone always used to look the other way because, yeah, obviously you guys need to get like about six hundred or stuff. So before you guys make this choice, if anything, put it in the back burner and really think about it and not only think about. Uh personal morale in the city hall, but also think about the residents and what they're gonna think, because um I know you guys compare it to other cities. But the other cities are are destination areas, we we're not there yet. You know, and the reason is, I think we've uh we've had this discussion before, especially you with with Mister Montero. Um the main issue uh in regards of our our city not not bringing in any like Trader Joe's or high end commercials. Is because we have a high free food program for the uh for the Hawthorne School District. And that's something, there's no high end commercials that's gonna come to our city if we have over ninety percent of free food programs, you know? And and this is something that's not being talked about amongst you guys, you guys need to get together, talk to the school district. And start reducing this free food program, you know, not all of them need this and we all know this, but you guys have not focused on this. Everybody thinks that giving out free turkeys, free this, free this and free that is gonna help for elections, is gonna help for things. It's not, it's hurting the city, you know, from a business point, which a lot of you are business people up there, you understand. I'm glad that Greg McLean is back because he understands this, you know, and I hope you guys can team up with Greg. And kind of shoot some ideas and start bringing in some businesses, this way you earn your keep, you earn your office and you earn your salary. Okay, that's how you do things, don't you just give yourself a salary without doing anything? You know, just be smart about it, think about the residents and think about the uh city morale, okay? Um and another thing, I'm glad Mister Vergara is back and um that's that's pretty much it. Thank you very much, God bless, have a great night.
Have a good night.
Uh do you have anybody else lined up, sir?
No, that is the end of public comments.
So there's no more thirty minutes, uh thirty seconds needed because you would have had somebody else lined up with that most thirty seconds, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Um I will now need to pull item twelve, resolution eight three two six from the consent calendar. Um as as it will be heard as a public hearing, it's very important that we do that, let people comment. Um it will be voted after the close of public hearing, once we are done with the consent calendar items, okay? So we'll talk about it and we'll open it up for comment from the community after. Uh Mister Clerk, can we have your consi- consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mister Mayor, there are no bids tonight, I have nine items on the consent calendar. There are items six, seven, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen for your consideration and approval. Uh for item seventeen, Rachel Standards is available for uh if council has any questions. Item six, approval waiver of full readings of resolution and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item ten, resolution eight three two three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing the destruction of police department internal record files from January first, twenty sixteen to December thirty first, twenty sixteen.
To the chair.
Well, actually, um do you did you complete your statement, Mister City Clerk?
Yeah, I was gonna go into item eleven, do you want me to?
Well, yeah, no, we'll still allow, so we'll still allow for anybody to make any comments, but go ahead, just finish your your script.
Okay, um item eleven, resolution number eight three two five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing the release of checks and warrants issued in connection with the emergency business assistance program. Item thirteen, resolution number eight three two seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing the re-release of checks and warrants issued in connection with the emergency housing voucher program. Item fourteen, resolution number eighty three twenty eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom. March fourth, twenty twenty and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the city council, commission and committees of the city of Hawthorne. For the thirty day period beginning January eleventh, twenty twenty two through February tenth, twenty twenty two pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act. And Assembly Bill number three six one. This item fifteen, resolution number eight three two nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing approving and ratifying the submittal of the fiscal year twenty twenty Edwards Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Program, local. Solid state solid station, item sixteen, resolution number eight three three zero. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a consultant agreement for cannabis policy. Development and program implementation with E J M A Planning and Development, Inc. Item seventeen, resolution number eight three three one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Approving the adoption of the public agency's post employment benefits trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, PARZ. And U S Bank for adoption.
Um.
To the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull sixteen for a discussion.
Excuse me, I.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman, raise two.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to pull item eleven and thirteen, sixteen and seventeen for discussion, please.
One one more time?
Item eleven, thirteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Let me, let me circle those real quick. So we have a common one between you and the mayor, Proton. Okay, I move on all items except item eleven, thirteen, sixteen and seventeen.
My second.
Uh roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Discussion item eleven, Councilwoman.
Thank you, uh I wanna take this uh uh ask here are. Who's doing the emergency business assistance, Kimberly and and Vaughn City Manager? Uh can you can you tell us roughly how many businesses are gonna be receiving roughly how much?
Yes, uh Kimberly Mack, are you available for questions?
Yes, thank you. Can you see me?
We can see you and we would like to. So there she is.
There you go. Uh hello, everyone, so as far as the um emergency businesses assistance program goes, it really depends on who's going to apply for the program. We earmarked uh three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the program. Um a hundred and thirty thousand are for micro enterprises at ten thousand dollars per grant, so that's a ten potentially thirteen businesses. And for the uh small businesses, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, and that's if they're willing to provide at least one full time. Um equivalent position, um so it really just depends on who applying, right now it's a slow application process. Since we've started, we only have fourteen applications.
Okay, and Vaughn, this is the one that we discussed at our uh December thirteenth council that we're gonna go back out. And try and get additional applicants to apply for the business assistance program, correct? And and we're hopefully gonna uh bump this number and then we allocated additional fundings to assist. In making sure we have the resources and the tools to capture some more applicants for the. The money that we have ultimately to be given out, correct?
Absolutely, staff is brainstorming on a successful plan to reach out to the community to get more responses back, but also uh help more people in the community.
And we're gonna continue to do this until the money's depleted, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor, that's for that item.
Yeah, a real quick.
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment on that.
Yeah, I I'll just, I I wanna see a comment first, I mean, I really appreciate the concern that can my council member colleagues have on. Making sure we get out to the word out to the community, but um at some point, I really think that um. I think we've done a hefty effort at times to reach out to the community on various things. Um when the rental assistance was put out, we did have a lot, but we didn't have uh what we expected when it came to applicants. So um other cities and colleagues that I have in other cities have found the same, it's not like it's been, they've been bursting at the seams for requests. And they've been doing uh a very uh strong campaign on outreach, so. Uh I just think we just need to understand that and just continue uh pushing and putting the word out, so. Um Kimberly, can you speak to that? Uh because I I know that like sometimes we go, hey, is Kimberly reaching out, is Kimberly, but we see that you are and the team here is. Um uh Vontray Norris, uh city manager, Kimberly, can you guys say anything with with regards to that on our reach outreach, please?
Sure, absolutely, we always make it a point to reach our um L E P requirement, which is our Spanish population and of course our English population. So we put things out in dual language and our media resources, our social media resources, our, you know, cable channels, newspaper, periodicals. Uh any way we can get it out there so that on our Becker boards, you know, by news, by email, uh any way we can get it out there. Word of mouth is always the most popular for some reason and our own housing website, um so that's what we stick to most of the time for sure. Um but we make it a point to advertise it, kind of like an upsell, when people call for one thing, we say, hey, by the way, do you know that we have this program available? Um just so they, you know, share it with somebody else who may need it, um but like you said, a lot of people don't wanna go through the hassle of the process. Providing the documentation, they'll start the process and stop and things like that, but we do let them know that it's available and we try and assist wherever we can.
And then we also have the uh, so sometimes some of these business owners are for immigrant uh business owners. And their experience with government is not always the ha- most happy back home, uh and when there's an outreach of this sort. Um they are very suspicious and on top of that, sometimes the times that we do reach out to them is like. Hey, you haven't paid your taxes or something crazy like that, so they kinda, they're kinda suspicious when it comes to that, so I'm not surprised, but I think. We should still push for outreach, so whatever you can do, okay, Kimberly?
If I can add also, uh Mayor, that uh Kimberly Mack, Housing Director, at any event that we've had in the city, she's always uh. Excited to have a booth and explain the programs I have she has in her department, so she's doing an excellent job and we're gonna work together as staff to assist her to get the word out.
Can we have a co- final comment from Mayor Proton on eleven and then we'll just vote?
Yes, I just wanted to um to say that uh I I want to encourage our staff to continue to push. To get more businesses involved because um I have had the experience in um in the outreach for bus- the business expo. When I talked to some businesses, they hadn't even heard that there was money available, so I don't know, um. I don't know why they haven't heard about it, but apparently. There there probably needs to be other ways of reaching them and I know that a lot of them don't have email and I know that's an issue. So I think that um we need to really develop a method to get our businesses email addresses. And 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 get information out to them through email, because I know that that's a problem, so um. That's what I I would I would like to say, just uh just keep pushing them, to keep pushing, to keep keep expanding the program, keep pushing them. Because um I know businesses are out there that have not taken advantage of it and I know they wanted to, but they honestly, some of them honestly. Were not aware, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, I'll make.
To the city manager, can uh to Mister Warners, can we put this information on our electronic billboard?
Yes, yes, and we have before, Kimberly, uh wanna speak on on that, please?
Yes, every program that we put out, we put them on what I call the Becker boards. On uh all of them that are available, we try to make it simple and easy to read with our contact information for them to ask more questions and get the documentation that's needed. Uh so that's a practice that we already use, but we can definitely make sure we put out some more rounds of advertisement.
And also Kimberly has used our street signs from Public Works uh to update uh the community on deadlines, upcoming events.
Okay, guys, I make a motion on eleven? Okay, I'll give the uh second to Councilmember Montero, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Discussion item thirteen, please.
Yes, hi Kimberly again, um uh for the uh renters assistance, you're getting ready to release checks and warrants. In connection with the emergency housing vouchers, how much money do we still have in our coppers or the rental assistance?
So that's two different programs, the emergency housing voucher program is not the same as the emergency rental assistance program.
Okay.
Um but the emergency rental assistance program has about one point two million dollars that's still available for use.
Okay.
Um but this specific resolution is for the emergency housing voucher program for assistance with. Um obstructions to being able to lease up a unit rather quickly.
Uh when you say i- i- is it, does it fall under section eight or is this emergency, how does folks get that emergency status?
So this program is similar to section eight, it's its own program, um had provided us with funding, they issued us sixty seven vouchers. They required us to go through a containment of qu- of care, which is LASSA for our jurisdiction. So the only way we receive referrals for this program is through LASSA only.
Got it.
And we already received sixty four of the sixty seven uh matches for those vouchers.
And and LASSA's here doing that?
LASSA's doing it for our jurisdiction and several others, yes.
I have yet to see LASSA here in our jurisdiction, okay, interesting, okay, thank you for that, appreciate that.
A follow up question on that, um if, how do, how do the our residents hear about the this opportunity to LASSA? So you know how we're asking, how what's our outreach, now I wanna, I wanna know what, how they get the people to call them, where are they coming from, how? How do they, no, I know, but like, how do they find out, is it because they just decided to go to a housing rights center and then losses help or what?
So the way we put it out, individual housing authorities put out a simple advertisement stating that housing vouchers were available, but. The residents who are interested have to go through a housing provider in order to become, to be assessed and become eligible for the voucher. That information is then sent to LASSA, they go through a whole system and then LASSA sends us the applications for those people who actually qualify for assistance.
So this is, so this is as a result of our outreach efforts as well, right?
A combination, yes, we work with Saint Margaret's. A combination, yes. We work with Saint Margaret's Center and uh, Harbor Interfaith, this five eighth uh, service provider as well.
So then, this is, this is part of our outreach effort, so I, I, uh, congratulations on that.
Mister Mayor, the, and also uh, through LASSA, there is a website that I have that people can go and do referrals there. And that they connect them to servers or, or housing, mental health. So it's all connected.
Awesome. I make a motion?
Second.
Um, the, the second is gonna go to Councilmember Montero. It was clearly him on this one. Uh, roll call vote?
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh, yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, discussion item sixteen, I'll, um, we have two people that wanted to talk, but I'll just go ahead and uh, go to Councilwoman Reyes English. And then uh, Ca- and then Mayor Protem, uh, Valentine immediately after that.
Uh, you have a presentation?
No, you guys both called out sixteen as a common one.
Yeah, uh, I called out uh, item sixteen and I wanna reference uh, uh, our first cannabis uh, working committee meeting that we had. That was on uh, Thursday, December ninth. Um, and uh, Mrs. Forge is here, hello. Um, we went-
Good afternoon, or good evening.
Evening, yes. We went through um, as a committee and we discussed the project service um, scope of work, correct? This is-
Correct, we did.
Okay. And I made notes with regards to um, how uh, the scope of work is gonna be um, provided with regards to who's gonna do what and how, uh, how it's gonna be e- either in collaboration or in the scope of work or how it's gonna be uh, solely the city is doing. And so I wanna make sure that we captured Robert, are you there? We ca- we captured um, the agreement during the time that we went through each line item through the scope of work. Uh, that we captured that in the agreement that we're gonna be voting on tonight. Does that make sense, Mrs. Forge?
That absolutely makes sense and it should be reflected in the amended document of the contract, uh, exhibit A scope.
Okay.
And also we had um, the fees have been amended accordingly. And also we had the committee agenda. So I hope you've received those three items that should have reflected what we have been doing in our working committee meetings.
Okay, so. Um, Mayor, if you would allow me, please, to just go through some of the scope of work items. This isn't, this is important because um, I wanna assure that we're um-
I'll give everybody an opportunity. Let's give everybody an opportunity to open up their, their contract, please.
And just so I'm on the same page, and for the body, um, Ebony McGee Anderson had an emergency, she's our project head. My name is Tony Forge, I'm the lead attorney on this matter.
Right.
So any questions that I cannot answer, I definitely will take the feedback back to Ebony and will give you the response. But if you look at the amended contract exhibit A scope, um, Councilwoman, that should reflect what we're talking about. I'll have it in front so we can go through it. You wanna go through it line by line?
Ordinance and resolution preparation.
Okay, yeah, so, can we go, Councilwoman uh, English, just so we can, I don't wanna say uh, rush through this either, but just so we can kinda highlight the, the main points. Ms. Forge, can you identify where the scope of work is on what page so we can just turn to it?
Um, it was in exhibit-
A.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A scope?
Says scope and then project scope.
Yes, correct. And it starts off with cannabis program development as A. That's the one I'm looking at.
Right.
Like the fourth page.
Yeah, it's after the, is the, is the exhibit A is after the, the signature page and have all the uh-
Yes, go ahead.
And then just city attorney and then you'll see exhibit A.
Yes, that's the-
Yeah.
Page, page five.
Okay, so can I um, go down to um, it's exhibit A scope one, go down to number two, which says project services?
Correct, okay.
Okay, project services and it's a specific project task may include, and it says that are not limited to the following, and then it goes A, B, C, D, E, et cetera, all the way down.
Correct.
So the, the project services that we um, discussed at our December ninth cannabis uh, committee meeting, our first, it went like this and it talks to, and you could go back and forth. Uh, no, A was ordinance and resolution preparation. That was in collaboration.
Correct. I have notes on that, correct?
Correct. Uh, B, the permit fee evaluation, that was gonna be internal.
Correct.
Uh, the development agreement review and oversight, that would be the city attorney, planning, collaboration.
Correct.
Uh, the other uh, C, development agreement, um, that again was city attorney planning collaboration, excuse me. We're going down to D, dis- uh, discretionary permit application development review and issuance. That was a collaborated effort.
Correct.
Uh, E, zoning verification, that was the scope of work for you all.
Correct.
Uh, F, permit application development, which would be a scope and collaboration along with the city.
Correct.
Uh, G, permit license application review and screening would be collaboration.
Correct.
Uh, H, community outreach, that was a collaboration and efforts that I see that uh, the scope would be, be making that plan and that's in the agreement.
Absolutely.
Um, I, uh, sequel review and document preparation, which was a collaboration.
Correct.
And then J, staff report development, uh, a collaboration.
Yes.
And K, general project management services, again, collaboration and scope.
Absolutely.
And that uh, L, preliminary building evaluations, that was an initial collaboration.
Correct.
And then M, we strike, we striking that to um, be internal, um, which included the building permit, plant checks, et cetera, which would be internal.
Right.
And then we, and then we would go on to N, compliance and enforcement support, which is a collaborated effort along with city staff.
Yes.
And then uh, O, real estate availability survey, which was where available. And then there was a uh, before zoning recommendations, this committee, uh, it would go to committee, planning committee, correct?
Correct.
And then it, and then it would go to council. I think if we needed to go, if you remember, we had the discussion, planning, and if it needed to go to council, it would go to council. Uh, O, uh, that was the real estate um, availability, where, where, where available. P, the social equity program development would be uh, a collaborative effort in scope. Uh, Q, social equity operational assistance is scope.
Mm-hmm.
Which is you all assisting those that want a business, right?
Correct.
Uh, for fairness. And then R was the legislative updates, which was basically uh, collaboration and also local. So I just wanted to assure that um, the contract that we're looking at tonight uh, speaks to what the committee and your uh, organization, E, EJMA, uh, agreed upon with regards to the scope of work.
Correct. And if I may, we also included two additional license types that we would want to scope out, that was lounge and testing, correct?
Yes, correct. And that became, that came to the city council and the city council agreed on that as well.
Councilwoman English, I don't have any of what you're, any of these items that you're discussing in my, can you see me? Can you see me on the screen? I don't have any of this online, in any of the-
Right.
I am going by the exhibit A, which does talk about some of these items, but they're not listed as, and I don't know if the rest of my council member colleagues do have the benefit of having that in their package.
So, so let me, let me just, let me just um, clarify. There was a first, there was a first uh, cannabis um, working group meeting, the first meeting, that was December ninth. And in that meeting, there was um, there was uh, uh, EJMA provided us with uh, an outline, which included the agreement and the type of work, scope of work, that they would be uh, uh, initiating and ultimately working on, uh, along with obviously the city. And we went through each one of those line items and we came to uh, a discussion and an agreement on how the city would collaborate with them uh, on the scope of work. So you're not gonna have that because it's, it's the working committee's uh, agenda. Does that make sense?
No, that's fine, but if we're going to vote on a contract of services, where's it go?
But Mister Mayor, we do have two pages of the scope of server that have, that Miss English just went from A all the way to
Yeah.
Uh, P, right?
So, so the ma- so, so, so what's before us, council member, what I wanted to pull the item was just basically to say that what we did on the ninth as a committee working group is what we agreed to and is on the contract. That's, that's, that's all we're doing this evening and, and, and it is. And, and Robert Kim assured that on, on tonight's agenda. But I needed to go through it again because uh, my notes is different than the, the final com- the result, the completion, the completion of uh, that list. So that's all. So you're not gonna find what you have because it's my notes, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer, no, I, I appreciate that, but uh, Mister, Mister uh, city manager, can you address my concern here? Because I do have the contract, but the itemized uh, letters A, the implementation plan, A through P that you brought me a copy of from the meeting. Are we saying that these items are embedded? Because I do see some of these to spread throughout the contract here. And uh, I'm happy with them, but Mister Norris, can you tell, can you address my concern as to why there's, how the-
So it seems that uh, your, our mayor did not have exhibit A and B uh, in his uh, his uh, folder this evening? So Robert, I, I don't have mine in front of me. If you can assist me with uh, identifying the or correlating the items that Councilmember Reyes English was mentioning and how it correlates to uh, exhibit A and B.
It, it sounded to me that um, that Councilwoman English had a list from the working committee um, in a, in a certain uh, alphabetical order. And the scope of work has been done with, it, it's been a little bit revised and it's not following that particular alphabetical order. And uh, i- am I correct, Tony, on, on that aspect?
Right.
Absolutely. But Councilwoman Reyes English is really getting into the specificity that we talked about in the working group. That is in big picture land when you're seeing it in the scope of work as the exhibits. So what she's doing is what we actually did in that committee meeting, that we went by line nine items and just agreed what we were gonna mutually work on and what we were going to work on as consultants and what you all were gonna work on as internal um, staff. And so all of those are embedded within uh, Mister Mayor, your exhibits and the contract, uh, exhibit A scope. But she just went in the specificity of what we actually talked about in the working group meeting.
Where is the scope in these pa- I have page one, two, three, four, five, six and seven. Where is the scope?
The scope is the exhibit, the contract exhibit A scope.
So after the signature page, you'll see a blank page that says exhibit A. Following the backside of that is exhibit A scope.
I don't have that. I just really don't have that.
I, I-
You can also look at the- The items I gave you is A and B exhibit. So if you look at uh, Councilmember Montero's holding it up, exhibit A.
Oh, I understand that. So then that was not here. That's, that's, that's my concern, but-
Is it only missing in the mayor's packet?
That's, I'm pretty sure it's there.
You wanna make a copy? I can give you mine to make a copy for the mayor so he can see it.
You can also look at the, the email that was sent out, though.
Yeah, but I would like to have had it here.
Everybody received the same cop- uh, packet, so you should have it, Mister Mayor. I can bring it, bring you my copies if you want, but I can be confident.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, guys. Go ahead and bring that. Go ahead and discuss anything you guys like to at this point.
Thing was, Ms. Valentine had a question.
Yeah, uh, unmute yourself and just go ahead and ask whatever questions you have.
Okay, am I up now? Okay, I had, I had a lot of questions. I wanted to, okay, you were talking about the scope of work. And um, I wanted to see how it tied into the exhibit B rates. I had a lot of questions about the exhibit B. Um, for example, um, your administrative miscellaneous services, what is that on exhibit B?
Hold on one second.
Can you repeat that, uh, Councilwoman?
Administrative miscellaneous services, what is that?
Um, Councilwoman, or is this Judge, hold on one second, Mayor Protem. Um, I believe that is the administrative work that um, Ebony's staff would have to do in order to service this contract. But if you want more specificity, I can take this note down and get back to you with specifically what it is. But that's what I believe it is. So the administrative work surrounding administering the program in and of itself.
Okay, and then the um, the question, okay, so now I wanted to see how it tied in because you were talking about some of the things that you were going to do in terms of collaboration. And I, I, I'm not sure how that ties into exhibit B where the rates are. For example, live scan background check at five hundred dollars each. Um, is that, is that collaboration or where, where would that tie into your scope of work? How does, how does that tie in? I don't see how the, how B ties in with A. That, that, that's my problem.
Okay, so your problem is the, the whole totality of the exhibit B rates, you want them to correlate to what's on exhibit A.
Correct.
Okay, and what I can do is go back to Ebony with that and scope it out accordingly, so it has the correlation.
Okay.
Because I did not draft this and so I don't wanna speak out of school to be a hundred percent transparent. And so I understand what you're wanting and I can go back to Ebony with that.
And, and I think, Tony, uh, the question comes up because during the working committee, the live scan background check was gonna be done uh, by the staff.
Right. I have that internally, but I believe Ebony, Ebony put it on there just in case there's something that happened and we were doing it, that would be the cost uh, associated with that. But I absolutely agree with you, Robert.
Okay.
Oh, and, and, and I have a question about on exhibit B, the development agreement preparation. Um, so why would that be, why would, uh, why would, who would be doing that?
The development agreement, let me see where it is on A. Hold on one second.
It's item C.
It is item C. And item C would be mutual, that's something we both would be working on. And so that's creating the contract.
So then why are we, are we being charged seventy-five hundred dollars each for that? You're saying it this, you're, you're saying it's, it's collaboration?
Well, the, yeah, because the contract is between the city and the operators and so we would be developing that. But we would have to work with the city in order to create the, the contract of the agreement. So that's where the-
You're saying, you're saying the city attorney is doing that?
It's a collaborat- collaboration.
Well, be- Okay, it's collaboration? So, and, and again, why are we being charged seventy-five hundred dollars if it's a collaboration?
Again, I'll give that information to you. That's the charge from EJMA for our piece. Um, but I'll give that information to you, um, so Ebony can substantiate it.
Okay, um, we have, we have some uh, questions about the okay, the live scan background check, um, the zoning sensitive use verification, what, uh, who's doing that?
Uh, Mayor, can I, can I chime in, please?
Well, um, yeah, well, just a moment, just to, let's, let's formulate your question.
The zoning sensitive use verification is eight hundred dollars each. Who is doing that? It said, uh, was that collaboration?
No, that's within our scope of work.
So that's not collaboration? That's your scope of work?
Collaboration, that's E, that's within our scope of work.
Um, Councilwoman uh, English?
Yes.
I think you can kind of uh, kind of, we talked earlier at some point and you kind of for, you know, if you could repeat kind of some of what you were telling me as to how you guys-
Can I finish my questions or, or what?
Well-
It might, it might help, it might help.
You're pausing, Council, Mayor Protem, so it almost seems like-
Well, I, I don't wanna pause because I've got other questions. I don't wanna interrupt my, my train of thought here.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, the reason I wanted to chime in is because some of the information that- The reason I wanted to chime in is because some of the information that you're asking about, uh, I could provide you some answers because we had our first cannabis working group meeting with the board. And we made some agreements with EJMA. And some of those agreements might be some of the questions that you're asking. So where I just went down on a list of collaborations that we're gonna be making, some of these costs that you're asking about might not necessarily be a cost that we will be charged for. So you had a question with regards to, um, uh, uh, live scan. We had a discussion on the board, the working committee group, that we could internally with the police department process some of those with our system. So it might, we might not have to, uh, be charged for that cost. So everything that is listed here might not necessarily pertain to us. Because again, we have staff and we have internal and EJMA processes that we've agreed on and I outlined those earlier.
But Councilwoman English, if, if we, if we do move with the live scan offered by EJMA, um, then that's the rate at which we would be charged.
That's the rate, exactly. But we had a discussion on the board and the board, uh, uh, one of the board members is Sergeant Lane, uh, no, excuse me, Sergeant, um, Craig.
Craig.
Uh, we had a, a lengthy discussion about that. And some of the, some of the, the, the services rendered could ultimately be done internally.
Uh, another internal, uh, aspect that's on Exhibit B is also building inspection. Uh, our building department has stated that they could handle that, so uh, I, I think what the Schedule B, uh, Exhibit B shows is pretty much the rates of, uh, or generally all tasks, but um, the scope of work is what we're, um, what we're gonna be part of this contract. Because scope of work does not have, I don't believe they would have, uh, background checks or building inspections and whatnot.
Um, I, I'd like to just go ahead and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem just finish your questions. Go ahead and, go ahead through it all.
Alright, so you have, you have a public hearing presentation. Uh, I'm sorry, no, no, oh, development agreement preparation. Um, my question is basically, since this is a legal document, why would this not be prepared by outside counsel as opposed to the consultant?
Well, for us, we've done this before and so why wouldn't we provide this service unless there's some reason why the city of Hawthorne would rather give this out to outside counsel?
Well, I guess I'm just looking at the cost of it, it seems very high.
Can you continue with the, your questions?
Okay, so then I'm looking at the public hearing preparation and presentation. Uh, and, and uh, planning staff usually does this sort of thing. Why are we not allowing, uh, our staff? Is this, is this also collaboration? Or is this, it seems to be, this is something that our staff would be able to do?
Mayor Pro Tem, well, we had the working meeting, um, actually, two members of planning were in that meeting. And they were indicating what they could and could not do with their current, uh, workloads and with this project. Councilmember, uh, Reyes English, am I not correct on that?
Correct.
And so they did give their input in terms of what they could work on and then what they couldn't and what they would be mutual or scope out to us.
I'm sorry, were they saying they could not do public hearing preparation and presentation?
Excuse me?
They said they could not do public hearing preparation and presentation?
That they do not do public hearing?
Is that what they said, that they don't do that?
Uh, no, they didn't say that in, in specifically, but what we did do was go through all these items and they said what they could work on and what they couldn't work on. And I think that question is one internally for them. For that specific line item that you, you indicated.
Okay.
Do you have, uh, any other additional questions?
Okay, let me finish. Yes, um, so, um, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for information on educational workshops. So, um, is that, is, where is that on the, um, on the scope of work and who is going to be doing that? Is that a collaboration or are you doing that yourself?
We are doing that and let me look up, give me one moment.
If I could just make mention, we have a hearing coming up, a meeting this Thursday at eleven. And one of the agenda items on the agenda includes the outreach component. So that's gonna be discussed on Thursday.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I guess my question.
Items that's under L, business development and educational services. We're also going to do that in community outreach, but it's, it, it's on L, under Exhibit A.
And that, it was said that that was collaboration?
And I also could under H, right, collaboration and, um, both are collaboration, correct. But we're getting all the information together. You know, all of that would be developed by us since we have the cannabis expertise. Um, but that is the rate accordingly.
So, but it is a collaboration, but you're still, you're still charging, you're still charging twelve thousand five hundred for the workshop?
Yes, as subject matter experts, yes.
Okay, and then, um, I have another question about the, uh, when you go to you say that you believe that one hundred percent of, I'm, I'm, I'm on Exhibit C now. You say you believe that a hundred percent of the cost will be reimbursed. Um, and you're looking at a six hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and you believe that a hundred percent of those costs will be recovered?
Yeah, that we're recouping the cost, um, through the different phases with the operators applying. And let me, that's also included.
Okay, so did you do an analysis to determine that this would be the case, that we would get a hundred percent of, of, um, of our costs recovered?
Ebony did that analysis, yes. Ms. Anderson did that analysis.
Okay, do, do you have it for us? Or is it available for us to look at?
I don't have that, but I can put that on my, uh, list and I can get that to you certainly.
Okay, yes, I would like to see that, um. Because we had had an analysis done some time ago by a, another company that said that they, we would probably wind up with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as, um, our, as, as revenue for, for cannabis in the city. So I, I'm, I'm concerned that how, how did you, how do you believe that we're going to get six hundred and eleven thousand dollars recouped?
That was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars revenue per location net after all those expenses were.
Correct, and so how many locations would we have to have in order to get six hundred thousand dollars?
Six? Five, Mister Mayor? After expenses.
Are we prepared to have that many?
It's not, it's not, it's, it's not a gross of a hundred and fifty thousand per location. It was a hundred and fifty thousand location profit. So this is taking into account revenue minus cost of standing it up and it'd be one, one fifty per location. So the, you know, I don't know what the cost was off the top of my head, but it was one fifty profit. And that's, that's not even from, that's from sales tax and all that stuff. The revenue that she's talking about recouping is from application fees. We don't have to give everybody a, 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 a license. They're just applying and paying us money.
And those are non-refundable. So you're gonna get that.
She's gonna recoup that money through them just asking us for a license, not from us giving even any licenses out.
Um, alright guys, uh, let's make sure we move along on this and we.
Alright, this is, this is not clear to me, okay? So it, this is, this is why I'm asking these questions, so the one hundred, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-five dollars is for what, Ms., um, uh, Ms. Ford?
That is recouping, um, the cost of the program. And that is covered by the application fees, so the gist of that, it means zero dollars that the city is putting out, basically. That you're gonna recoup the cost when we do the phases with the applicants during the program.
And you have an analysis that, that has, that has come to this conclusion? Your analysis has, you have this analysis?
And like I said, I would have to get back with Ms. Anderson about that, but if that's something that you would need, I will certainly ask her for that.
All, all consultants say the same thing. They report the same thing. It's a common practice.
Yes, I would like to see that. I'm talking to Ms. Ford. I would like to see.
Gentlemen, uh, let's, I think, uh, including myself, uh, and everybody else, let's just let the conversation be between, uh, this, uh, Councilwoman Valentine and Ms. Ford, Mayor Pro Tem. Because then we're taking away from Ms. Ford's presentation and I think we'd get through this quicker. Uh, go ahead and just, uh, Ms. Ford, uh, can you answer any additional questions you have so we can move on to the next?
Well, I answered the question, Mayor, that she had and I will get back with it. And, and Mayor Pro Tem, so I'm very clear, you want to see the actual analysis document, correct?
That's correct.
And so, Mister Mayor, that's something that I would have to get, uh, from them. What we're talking about is just it will cover the expenses as nothing out of pocket for the city because we're recouping that. And as Councilmember Patterson said, it is a common, um, practice in the field. So if you want the analysis, Mayor Pro Tem, I can go to Ms. Anderson about getting that for you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I have a question for the, the City Manager, uh, a comment, a question for him. Uh, Mister City Manager, um, can you please obtain, uh, from other cities that have done business with this consultant? The cost of each contract and the contract itself for inspection by us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, I guess I'll, I'll just speak now. Are you, are you done, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I am, thank.
Okay, yeah, you know, this is, uh, I appreciate the work that the Ad-Hoc Committee did. Um, look, having looked at the, uh, document before, I just located the documents that I had. So, uh, I guess this is the important thing I just wanna highlight and I think, and I was interjecting and people were, so this is just a schedule. It's not like, uh, it's not like, uh, uh, free rein on the, on Ms., uh, Ms. Ford and her company to just go ahead and just start charging whatever they feel like it. Some of the stuff needs, will need to get approved by us. And we, we decide what services she's gonna implement, but, but these are the schedules. The fees are gonna be established per hour, per each, uh, function that they're going to do. So, um, sure, I think, uh, it's exciting that, it's exciting piece of information that we're gonna recoup. You know, some of these fees, uh, using some of the applications. I mean, I think we'd all like to kinda see that and make sure that we see that. So that is exciting and so we just wanna see that, uh, and feel comfortable that it's going to be so. And then any other information that you could provide us with details would be also helpful, okay?
And Mister Mayor, I would like to say Councilmember Reyes English does a great job in our committee meetings, in our working group meetings. She's very directed, she keeps us accountable, even when we're talking about scope of services as you saw today. We're going through line items, so you should be very confident in that.
Um, and, uh, can, uh, can we repeat the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee? Just so that the public and our councilmember colleagues understand what the balance of the, uh, Ad-Hoc Committee membership was? Go, uh, go ahead, uh, Mister City Manager, just repeat the members of the council, of the committee?
Uh, perfect. Uh, we have myself, Von Tron Norris, uh, City Attorney, Robert Kim, Councilwoman Reyes English. We have, uh, Sergeant Kenny Craig, uh, and Robert, do we have Greg? Playing, uh, interim planning director, that's your committee.
Okay, so we had member, representatives and, and on, on the other end, members, okay, so that was our membership of the Ad-Hoc Committee. And so we dictate and we just went back and forth with EJMA and established these rates, so.
And, and during the working committee, and I'm sorry to interject, uh, during the working committee meeting, uh, we had a staff report that analyzed the consultant costs of EJMA plus the other consultants that, that, uh, that bitted on the RP process. And the staff report was that the cost for other consultants were in line with EJMA, that there was uh, basically at a same level.
Yeah, that's, I mean, ultimately, that's what we're gonna get from whatever you give, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and us. So, uh, let's just go ahead and move with the next, uh, people who have hands up. Was it one, uh, Councilman Montero or Patterson that wants to go first? Go ahead, Councilman.
Some of the questions have been answered. And, and this is what the, um, uh, all of you must understand that the Ad-Hoc Committee, uh, I did attend because it was a, it was an open meeting. Uh, I didn't participate in the discussion, but it was, it was an outstanding meeting. And, uh, I have to take my hat off to the Councilwoman English because she was tough. And like, she was tough and she went through line by line and that is what this document now is presented to us. And, 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 uh, and all these other questions has been, has been explained. Because, um, all these programs, the cannabis program for the city of Hawthorne is gonna be new. So the consultant is the expert, so that is why they have to prepare all the outreach, the education materials to go give to the public so we can have a transparent and an open communication to the public. And so when, when we establish the cannabis program, it is an outstanding program. It's effective. It is going to work for the city of Hawthorne. So our staff have, like we said, it's gonna be a collaboration, that a lot of things gonna be done, like the, the, uh, the, um, FBI background checks, you know, the part of the Sequo, part of the zoning, part of the inspection. But the EJMA is a consultant that is going to give us the ropes for us to tie together all what is need to create a program. So I'm really, believe it or not, and I'm going to make a motion for us to, um, vote on the contract.
Second, second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
I'm abstaining.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The, the vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes, except for Pro Tem Val, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, who is abstaining.
Okay, guys, um, so, uh, yeah, I know, but let me just say this, just because we went ahead and voted, all that information that's been requested, uh, Ms. Ford? Uh, we, we still need that from you, okay, because
Absolutely.
We want, we need to have that information and any, and, and essentially any information that's being asked by councilmember, uh, my councilmember colleagues. Uh, because that'll just help fortify, uh, the public trust in, in our decision here and that everything was thought out really carefully.
I totally agree, Mayor, with the transparency. I will get that information to you and, uh, anything else, just feel free to contact us.
And then, uh, and Mister City Attorney, just still give us the, just do, give us your presentation or your information on what this company has done in other cities, just so that our, our councilmember colleagues can be comfortable with the choice that was made.
I'll do that.
Uh, Councilmember English, you wanna just end this so we can move on to the next?
Yeah, no, um, congratulations to EJMA, uh, Mrs. Ford, my, um, congratulations to your organization.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I just wanna make mention that, you know, the working committee, the cannabis working committee is still doing its due diligence with regards to a number of things that we need to do to assure a good cannabis program. One of those, uh, is gonna be the outreach in the community. How much, how many, and for how long? And this is something that I'm very, uh, strong on and about, just like I was with, uh, the boring company and digging a hole under our streets. Everyone needs to be contacted. Sequo recommendations and/or Sequo hearings, et cetera. So there's processes that are still in the process. We have, we are not even finished yet. So, again, these committee hearings are every Thursday, the first Thursday of a month. Feel free to log on and listen in at eleven AM. So when you have discussions here on the council that you're not quite versed on or have, uh, quite experienced or questions about, maybe some of these hearings could help you. More importantly, some of the things that we need to implement, we haven't even started. How much, how many? We just finished selecting the licensing of how much, uh, you know cannabis we're gonna do, huh? We know what, how much licensing we're gonna have, right? There's a discussion on how many, uh, uh, dispensaries. We're not even there yet. We're not even there yet. So let's just go through the process. Let us be able to work collectively with the consultant. So let's just go through the process. Let us be able to work collectively with the consultant and with our staff, and all of these questions coming together will ultimately provide us what we need, and that's a good cannabis program, so. Um, stay tuned, uh, and be aware. Be aware by tuning in and listening to some of the discussions happening around cannabis.
I just wanna make one clarification, uh, the meetings of the working committee is second Thursday, second week, Thursday and fourth week, so second, fourth week at eleven AM.
That's right. I just had our first one on the ninth, so I'm getting.
And, uh, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna move on to seventeen, but every single question that's being asked by every member of this council is important and needs to be asked. It does. And whether somebody disagrees, abstains, or votes yes, no, it doesn't matter because some, there are members of the community that are, are looking at this stuff. They have access to the, to the contract, and they're going to be asking these things. All eyes are on all the cities. I'm straight with everybody here. This is a very, uh, I don't wanna say precarious, but in some ways precarious process. Where there's people looking at what we are doing, okay? Because there's people that are out there like serpents wanting to find holes in what we do, okay? So, I know that Mayor Protem asked a lot of questions today. Those were good and awesome questions, okay? Because there's a lot of, uh, like I said, serpents that just are ready to cause trouble, okay? And, uh, as long as we ask questions and get the information and have all the backup, then we're good. So, no matter how long the discussions on these items take place, I don't care. Let's just, uh, do it if we have to again on the next round. Item seventeen, discussion.
Yeah, item, yeah, item seventeen, I wanted to ask, uh, is it Felice?
Yes, I'm here.
I, I, I was reading the agenda bill, but I, I'm still not sure exactly what we're trying to do here.
Okay, and let me just give you a, a, a little summary of why this item is on the agenda. Um, if you recall, in October, we brought to you, uh, an OPEB valuation item. Um, that item, um, gave us the balance of the city's accrued liability for OPEB, which is a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. Um, that increased by thirty-two million due to a decrease in the discount rate. Um, at that time, our actuarial, um, um, consultant, uh, recommended that we do, um, uh, enter into a trust in order to reduce those liabilities. And so what we have tonight is, uh, Rachel Saunders can give you a brief summary of what it is that um, the benefits of this trust will bring to the city and, um, how that will work.
Okay. And then, Sanders.
Great, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Glad to be with you. Um, I, I have the pleasure of speaking, um, with Mayor Protem Valentine and, and Councilmember Montero on, on this item before, but glad to see you that I haven't met before. Um, I will bring up, um, a few slides that I think will help provide a quick overview to, uh, further, um, highlight what Felice was just saying, to help provide some clarity here. So, um, the item up for consideration tonight, as Felice mentioned, is the adoption of a Section one fifteen trust to address the city's growing OPEB liabilities. So as a quick reminder, those OPEB liabilities are really your city's retiree medical benefits. And the beauty of a one fifteen trust is that it is essentially a vehicle that can be used by any local government to pre-fund essential governmental functions, OPEB being included. So the par section one fifteen trust is IRS approved. Um, and you'll see here on my screen a visual of what it looks like. For the purposes of tonight's conversation, you can ignore the right side. Um, our trust does actually allow for cities to pre-fund both their OPEB and their pension or CalPERS liabilities. As I understand it, the city really wants to tackle that growing OPEB liability. So, this trust offers the city the opportunity to safely and securely that money aside into the OPEB account within the one fifteen trust. And once that money is in the one fifteen trust, uh, it is irrevocable, meaning that it is set aside uh, only for the purpose of retiree medical expenses or OPEB costs. Therefore, the city would only be able to take reimbursements or withdrawals from the trust for those OPEB-related costs. So, um, that would allow the city, you know, to send us in a given year what you paid out in terms of your retiree medical benefits. You could reimburse that money back to your general fund, or even pay out your, uh, retiree medical benefits directly. You could pay for those ongoing actuarial valuations, et cetera. And so as long as those funds are being used, um, for OPEB specifically, that's what the trust is really intended for. Now, there's a number of benefits included in the trust, um, and let me actually go over some of those on this next slide. Essentially, once money is moved out of your general fund reserve and into a one fifteen trust, there's a lot of benefits that come to light. One of those biggest benefits is the ability to diversify the investments within the one fifteen trust. So, um, Felice did mention the discount rate. And really, the discount rate is tied to the expected rate of return on investment. So as you may be aware, your general fund investments are really, um, restrained by California government codes and very conservative investments. You're not allowed to invest in equities, and once you move those assets out of your reserve account and your general fund and into a one fifteen trust, now you do, under, um, the advisement of professional portfolio managers, you do have the ability to actually invest in portfolios designed for this one fifteen trust that do have equity exposure. So that really allows your city to help grow those assets over time with the benefit of compounding interest earnings and gives you really the opportunity to, um, get a greater rate of return than you otherwise would if those assets were simply sitting in your general fund. In addition to that, um, because this is an irrevocable trust, GASB seventy-five, which is the, um, California accounting standards that speak to OPEB, also allows you to account for those assets on your financial statements. So you may or may not be aware, under GASB seventy-five, the city is required to reflect its net OPEB liabilities on your financial statement. And so actually setting money aside into a one fifteen trust program like this allows you to reflect a no, excuse me, a lower net OPEB liability. So these assets are really working to offset and reduce that net OPEB liability. So it's something that is really helpful for your balance sheets as well. So let me quickly, um, and and Felice already hit upon this, but let me quickly go over some of the biggest findings from that latest actuarial study. Um, as Felice mentioned, and we're seeing this with cities all across the state of California, OPEB liabilities are continuing to rise. So, on your last valuation, as Felice mentioned, it was an increase of about thirty-two million. Total OPEB liability now for the city is over one, one hundred and thirty-nine million. And I mentioned that discount rate. This is a rate that the actuary assigns. And really what they're looking at is what your general fund investment's going to do long-term for you. This rate follows the twenty-year municipal bond, um, so it's, it's pretty low. It's at two point two one percent. And one of the biggest benefits, as I mentioned before, to moving money out of your general fund and into a one fifteen trust is the ability to diversify how you're investing. And so in this example, let's say you're now investing in equity portfolio that has an expected return rate of over six percent. You can see here that the actuary would give you credit, um, for now investing in equities with that higher, uh, interest rate expectation. And as the general rule of thumb here at the bottom of the page states, for every one percent you increase the discount rate, the unfunded liability is actually lowered by ten to twelve percent. So in this example here, when you see a four percent potential increase in your discount rate due to investments, you will actually see this total OPEB liability number be lowered potentially forty to forty-eight percent. So it has a really meaningful impact once you do move monies into a one fifteen trust and start to invest those in a diversified manner. Um, I mentioned the ability to take money out of the one fifteen trust when, um, you would like to reimburse yourselves for those rate-related retiree medical expenses. So you'll see here, just as an example, um, your pay-as-you-go payments, basically what you're paying out of your general fund to deal with those annual retiree medical costs. On this last fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, were right around three point two million. So let's say, for example, you had, um, you know, four million in the trust, and you said, we want a reimbursement for this last year of the three point two million we paid out, no problem. Again, you can reimburse that money to your general fund to cover those costs, or we could send it to your retiree medical provider or even employee. So again, um, the money is not tied up in the trust as long as you are using it for the intended purpose of OPEB. So, last thing I'll cover here, um, in, in wrapping up this overview of OPEB, we have a lot of cities that, that have ultimately done, um, OPEB. It's, um, we actually have four hundred and fifty member agencies in our one fifteen trust, many of which are local to LA County. And, um, I can tell you that I've actually worked with two LA County cities that are now fully funded on OPEB. And both of them got there really with the ability, um, to get those compounding interest earnings over time since they set this up about over a decade ago in both cases. So again, biggest benefit here is the ability to get a higher discount rate when you do diversify how you invest your money. Um, that's ultimately going to lower your total OPEB liability, as I explained, and give you, give you the opportunity to grow those assets. We talked about the benefit of being able to reflect a lower net OPEB liability on your balance sheet if you do ultimately have assets set aside in the trust. Um, one thing that councils often appreciate knowing is that GFOA actually does recommend this as best practice, and it has done so since January of twenty twelve. So I know that carries a lot of weight for a lot of cities. In addition, you know, you may have the ability, um, to get better, uh, credit ratings for doing this. And again, you know that those, um, OPEB assets are available to you when you need them. So oftentimes, we're asked, what is the downside of this? Because there's certainly a lot of benefits. The only potential downside is market fluctuation, because obviously now, you know, you'd be investing in the stock market. But that's where, as I mentioned, there would be a portfolio manager working directly with your city to really understand your objectives, and that includes everything from time horizon, um, risk tolerance, when may you need to get to the money, um, central funding and withdrawal policies. All of those conversations would happen to make sure that you're set up for success when you do adopt a program like this. So, that being said, I, I, I hope that was a helpful overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Uh, you explained a whole lot, and, uh, I, I noticed that we did something back in twenty fifteen. I was reading some of the, the items here. Uh, I, I guess, I, I'm curious why we haven't done this way back when.
I'll make a motion?
Second. Yeah.
I'll give it to Councilman Montero, roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Thank you, Sanders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Felice.
Um, item twelve, a public hearing for Resolution eighty-three twenty-six was pulled from the consent calendar. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read item twelve, please?
Uh, yes, I can. Item twelve, Resolution number eight-three-two-six, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing and approving a fourth amendment to the tow and storage fee schedule of the non-exclusive towing and storage contract with US Tow and extending the contract term to twenty twenty-four.
Okay, uh, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, are there any speakers on the item?
No, we have no speakers.
Having no speakers, I declare the public hearing closed. I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay, uh, ordinances, please.
Uh, we have, uh, item number twenty, sir. Can you go ahead and read that, please? Yes, I can. Um, ordinance number two-two-two-eight, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, setting the compensation of the mayor and city council members commencing January first, twenty twenty-three for adoption.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay, so, uh, we have so this is item twenty-two, the city manager's consent calendar. Mr. City Manager, um, can you just read? Uh, I just need you to read this, uh, these items, and just so we can move on to the next items after that. Uh, item number twenty-three to thirty?
Perfect. Um, Mr. Mayor, I have item twenty-three to thirty for your approval. Item twenty-three, additional bodyware cameras, BWCs for use by police department staff. Item twenty-four, provide COVID-nineteen testing to the public. Item twenty-five, amendment number two to the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Telehealth Van LC for providing daily virtual telehealth resources and family support to low-income and homeless individuals in the city. Item twenty-six, marking for on-street, uh, spaces, T-parking. Item twenty-seven, local street improvement, twenty twenty-two, city project number two-two-dash-zero-four out to bid. Item twenty-eight, request for transfer of funds to local agency investment fund. Item twenty-nine, first-time homebuyer program, potential federal funding consideration. Item thirty, City of Hawthorne, uh, landlord resources. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my, uh, city manager consent calendar. May I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to pull twenty-five.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, uh, twenty-five and
Do I have a motion on the?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, the twenty-nine?
I said second.
Okay, just a moment, guys. I make a motion, but I'll entertain anything, anybody wanting to pull stuff, so go ahead.
Okay.
Item twenty-five?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero, you wanted to pull something?
I, I don't wanna pull something, but I just want us to, to hear the presentation on item twenty-nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion, I'll make a motion on all items, with the exception of twenty-five and twenty-nine?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Uh, Councilmember Patterson, your discussion, item twenty-five?
Yeah, I was just hoping to, to get a presentation by the, uh, um, I don't, I don't know if we wanna call them vendors, or the company that company in question before we, uh, make an amendment to their, their, um, their contract. Like to, uh, get a report about their, their work and their progress over these, these last six months.
I second that.
Okay, sir, so, uh, I concur. And so we'll, uh, we'll receive the, a paper report? Is that what we're asking for?
No, I like to hear them make a presentation, as well as anything in writing, um, you know, before we
So that means we'll, uh, hear from them at the next meeting, correct? Is that your suggestion, Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll, I'll concur. Um, so I guess we have a majority on that. I, I mean, a concurrence on that, not a majority on what we're gonna do on the item. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, uh, move on to item twenty. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, was that sufficient to pull the item?
Yes, uh, we'll go ahead and pull and place another agenda item as a presentation by telepeople from Telehealth, as well as any written documentation they may wanna submit before the second amendment is approved.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, presentation on item twenty-nine, I believe there
Mr. Mayor, before we, uh, go to item twenty-nine, if, uh, there's any questions regarding COVID testing, we have Alliance Healthcare available to fill questions or briefly talk about the services that they're intending or were approved to provide to City Hawthorne.
Uh, we voted on it, but if anybody wants to ask a question, we just
Uh, they should give us the information, so when the, when the constituent call us, we know what to tell them, please. I wanna hear, thank you.
There is, uh, is that individual here?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, my name is, I'm a member with Reliant Health Services. I'll be part of the team, uh, uh, providing COVID testing in, uh, in the City of Hawthorne, and I just thank everyone for allowing us to be here tonight. Uh, we will be offering testing, uh, Tuesday through Saturday from nine AM to four PM. Uh, it will be onsite at the, um, community, um, community center parking lot. Is free and available to everyone, uh, and we are hoping to, uh, provide, um, we are hoping to make testing available to, um, all residents of Hawthorne and to the public, uh, who, who, um, need access to testing.
So, so again, we say Tuesday to
Tuesday through Saturday from nine AM to four PM.
And then to four PM. And, and do you have, like, the people have to have appointment or just walk in?
Um, so we are, are gonna be asking everyone to pre-register, but anyone is welcome to walk up, and we will get them registered right on site, so they are able to pre-register, uh, they can do it when they come up for testing.
All right.
Monica, can you speak about how many tests that you're gonna have available daily?
Go ahead.
Uh, we'll have, uh, as, as many tests as we, as we need, um, available for, uh, anyone who wants testing, testing done. So it, it's not that there's a certain amount, it's, um, we're open for testing from nine AM to four PM, and, uh, we will certainly, um, accommodate anyone who comes up to us for testing.
Ma'am, can you just give us a general number of Ma'am, can you just give us a general number of tests that you might have available on hand that day? Because we have experiences of having people tested, tested before and they ran, they would run out of uh, testing kits. Can you give us some general idea, please?
Um, w- we, I mean, we're prepared for um, anywhere from four to eight hundred.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, that sounds good. I, I, for me at least. Go ahead.
Um, and I, I, actually, I, I also wanted to take a, a minute to introduce um, Dr. Danielle, who is uh, our chief medical officer. As, as I'm sure you all know, there is a lo-, uh, there are a lot of questions going on right now. Um, and, and a lot of um. Uh, information is, is kinda out there. And so um, our, our chief medical officer was kind enough to join us tonight. And wanted to just share a little bit of insight to you about the um, the, the COVID environment and, and why testing is so important.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hey, guys, uh, thank you, City Council, for having us on. I know you guys have been on for a while and uh, you've had a lot of things to cover. Um, I'm an E R doctor in Los Angeles, that's uh, Providence, San Jose Medical Center. And I've been a COVID nineteen uh, news consultant for C B S L A for the last couple of years. And now the chief medical officer at Reliant. Uh, just happy to join you guys tonight. And I just wanna, you know, reiterate. Um, what's going on right now, what we're seeing in the E R. And we're certainly, you know, across L A and across the country, there's just not enough. Home test anymore. And we've all probably experienced that in the last couple of months, especially with the Omicron pandemic. People just don't have anywhere to get a test. And what happens is they're going to the E R, they're going to urgent care, they're waiting six to eight hours. For a test. And as you all know, that's a huge chunk of time, especially for working families. And um, if families have, you know, kids that need to go back to school and things like that. And so, you know, we're really trying to provide this important service uh, right now. And, you know, the East Coast is seeing a potential plateau in their surge of uh, Omicron cases. But we haven't seen that yet on the West Coast. We're still setting almost daily records here in L A County. So the next couple of weeks till the end of January is absolutely critical. And probably till, probably, we might see a plateau in L A maybe the end of January, but then that still leaves the whole month of February. On the back end of that surge where people are still gonna need testing. And, you know, eighty to ninety percent of the transmission is asymptomatic or presymptomatic. People don't know that they're infected with Omicron and they're spreading this. And so we really want to uh, help out the city and get available testing for everybody that needs it. And make it a, as accessible as possible. So um, you know, again, really, thank, thank you for having us on tonight. And, you know, we hope to help you out.
Thank you, sir. Um, and uh, it, I, I had stories of people, my friends, colleagues, family members. Lining up for five hours, man, five hours. And, you know, this is through like all the, you know, these uh, Kaiser Permanente and, you know, these other, other uh, what do you call them? H M Os and stuff. So look, I'm really happy that you're here. Thank you for presenting that, so we can give the information. And, you know, uh, we wish you good luck and hopefully, you know, uh, we can get the word out.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to serve.
Thank you, folks.
And thank you for being the heroes, uh, uh, because the healthcare system has been overwhelmed.
Yeah.
And I know there is a lot of shorting, you know, in the professionals, special nurses. So thank you for being there and to, and to hold the fort, because this is a tremendous effort. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
My pleasure.
I have a question.
Go ahead, and then Councilwoman Reyes English after that. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, both of you for being here, all three of you rather, for being here. And thank you for assisting our city. Um, how long is the testing going to be available?
Um, we are um, offering uh, we are planning to be here for a minimum of six months and hoping to extend past that.
Um, although. You're going to be in the City of Hawthorne for six months?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Um, although um, I, I certainly hope that we don't need to go past six months. But um, realistically, uh, we hope to extend past that.
And Monica, do you wanna speak about uh, potential uh, vaccinations as part of the, the testing?
Uh, yes, thank you. So um, I mean, as, as uh, you, you may have heard, I mean, that vaccinations are equally as important. Um, to testing, uh, they're definitely a, a line of defense that we can use. Um, and so we are going to be offering vaccines as part of uh, our services uh, at the site as well.
Thank you, thank you. Fantastic.
Councilwoman Reyes English, have you had a hand up or you're good?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna be good here in a minute. I just wanted to make sure to give Mister Munoz an opportunity to cha-, uh, chance to say hello. I see you sitting there and maybe you wanna say a few words. Um, but uh, this is great. I think it's a, a positive effort that the city council and all of us here are making to assure that the residents of Hawthorne have accessibility. And moreover, an opportunity to test. This is something as we all have, you know, in discussion, have heard and continue to hear uh, every day. It's gonna be a requirement for schools, a requirement for jobs and those that need to show negative testing uh, weekly. And so I think this is gonna be a sigh of relief to those that have been waiting in line like I was Monday for five i-, five, five hours with Kaiser.
Oh, my God.
But uh, when you said that, I had to laugh. But anyhow, um, thank you and uh, great efforts here. And look forward to continuous uh, work where uh, COVID and Omicron and whatever other issue is going on. Uh, that we could uh, collectively work to ensure the residents have access and opportunities, just like L A does. So we're the first in the South Bay and I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
That's hella good, if you ask me. I think so, so. All right, thank you so much. Let's move on to the uh, next uh, items here. We have. Uh, so, are we good?
Presentation twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Was that, okay, twenty-nine? Go ahead.
Good evening, council members, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, tonight we come before you just with an update. I've had several questions from different council members regarding the first-time homebuyers program. Um, initially by Councilmember Montero and most recently by Councilmember Patterson. So I thought it would be important to come back as requested by Councilmember Patterson with the historical relevance of that program. And how that would sit well with the city at, at this point in time, given our current market. So I'm gonna introduce Mister David Munoz, who is going to give us a, a brief overview of how that program ran and how it may potentially. Run um, today or in the future. David?
Uh, good evening, Mister Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Uh, as Ms. Smack indicated, my name is David Munoz. I work with L D M Associates to assist the city in implementing its HUD-funded programs. And under her excellent leadership, um, she requested that we do some additional research. On the first-time homebuyer program, the types of funding sources that can be used. What the process would be to utilize those funds, um, as well as, you know, the previous success. Of the city's implementation of a similar program. And so with that, um, it, as part of the agenda bill, uh, it outlines the three. Types of funding sources that the city has available to it from HUD. Uh, the first being Home A R P or the American Rescue Plan. The second being the Community Development Block Grant Fund or C D B G. And then third is the Home Investment Partnerships or Home Funds. And we outline um, how it is that the first-time homebuyer program could be eligible to receive funds. Uh, within each one of those grants that are treated separately um, and treated unique, uh, uniquely. Um, in terms of the Home A R P grant, based on guidance from HUD. As well as conversations with the city's HUD representative, it seems that the Home A R P funds. Would not be able to be used for a first-time homebuyer program. Uh, because it is geared more towards rental assistance and emergency assistance to prevent homelessness. So that led us to, you know, narrowing down the focus to the C D B G and home programs. Under C D B G, the city would have the ability to fund the first-time homebuyer program. Whether that's by paying the um, you know, closing costs, providing a percentage of the down payment. Um, you know, assisting with the mortgage financing and so forth. And that could be, you know, considered either a capital improvement project, as it's called, or a public service project. Now, the reason why this analysis in particular focuses on home. Uh, rather than C D B G is because the city does have a limited amount of C D B G funds, about a million dollars a year. Of which about thirty-five percent gets spent between admin and public service activities such as the teen center. Um, and so that leaves you with about sixty-five percent for capital projects. Um, and so currently, the city is funding a commercial rehab program within that segment. And so we know that we don't want to distract or kind of divert those resources away from that program. And so for that reason, we really narrowed down on home as that uh, potential source. Given the city has about two million dollars that it could invest in such a program. And we go through the various requirements um, that are specific to the home program. And I think for the purposes of our conversation tonight, the, the two that we'd really like to focus on are. Number one, the types of properties that you could, you know, assist as part of this program. And then second is the eligible, um, you know, buyers or homeowners or potential new homeowners. That's, it would be. Um, so in terms of the types of properties, it could either be a single unit. Or a condominium townhome. And there is a maximum value that that house can have. Um, as you can see in the report, um, the maximum value of that house could not exceed more than. Seven hundred ninety-eight thousand for a single-family home. And it could not exceed seven hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for a condo or townhome. And this is where I think uh, a program like Home is unique. Because it is a federal program and it has one set of regulations for every single community in the country. And it doesn't necessarily take into account the housing prices in Los Angeles. Um, and more specifically in Hawthorne, which are extremely high. Um, and so that is certainly um, something that the city will want to keep into consideration. And or, you know, keep in mind any partners that own properties um, that they are willing to kind of sell. Um, and I, would you like me to stop here, Councilwoman Patterson? Or sh-, just continue and then we'll do it at the end? Okay. Um, then, so we've got the maximum value of the property. The second item is the maximum amount of home funds that you would be able to invest in that property. So if the maximum value is about seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, the maximum that you could invest. In a property is based on how many bedrooms it has. Um, if it was, let's say, a two-bedroom. The maximum amount of home funds that you could invest in that particular unit is two hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars. So, yeah, just to kind of follow along, you know, we're talking about, about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house. The city can invest up to two hundred thousand dollars to, you know, acquire, rehab, uh, re-, you know, construct. And sell the property. And then lastly, in terms of the eligible buyers, um, those eligible buyers must be at or below eighty percent of A M I. Um, which currently for a household of three, for instance, would be eighty-one, an annual income. Of eighty-one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. So now we're talking about eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house, two-hundred-thousand-dollar maximum investment to cover the acquisition. Rehab and resale of the property to a household that is at or below eighty percent of A M I. And there's caps on what their monthly mortgage cost should be. Um, as well as requirements for how much they need to be able to come to the table with as part of the down payment and their reserves. Um, just to make sure that the city isn't investing two hundred thousand dollars to place this house, this family into a house. Come to find out, a year later, they weren't able to pay the mortgage payments. And now the city's out two hundred thousand dollars and that family hasn't been assisted. Um, and then lastly, uh, we did an analysis of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen first-time homebuyer program. Which was also funded by Home. Um, in total, there were twenty-six applications received. Twenty-four of those were denied. And the two that were approved. Um, were for homes that were about half a million dollars each. Um, the closing costs were about ten thousand. There was a home subsidy of about two hundred fifty thousand. But the very unique situation that we had here is that each one of those buyers came in with at least seventy thousand dollars upfront to the table. And that is what enabled them to be eligible to make the investment feasible according to Homes Underwriting Standards. Um, so it's not to say it's impossible, uh, but it's certainly a unique situation. That I think most communities in Los Angeles County are facing. Um, and so with that, you know, we did a feasibility analysis. We went through the four steps. We um, calculated what is an eligible buyer and how much do they need to come to the table with? And based on that analysis, the most feasible household or family that could be assisted is a household of five. That as a household earns a hundred, two thousand, two hundred dollars in a year. Um, we'd need to figure out a property that's, you know, about seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. And set up a mortgage payment that's no greater than two thousand eight hundred eleven dollars per month. Um, a seventy-seven thousand dollar down payment would be required to kind of get it to that level. Um, and the individual would have to come with eighty-three thousand dollars, three hundred thirty-eight cent. Or three hundred, eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars to the table um, in order to be considered eligible. And that was the most feasible. If you get into a household of four, they'd need to come to the table with a hundred thirty thousand. If you go to a household size of three, they'd need to come to the table with two hundred fifteen thousand. And so I think you can see the disparity between what their annual income is and what they need to come to the table with. Um, and so with that, I will, you know, open it to any questions um, or suggestions uh, that you all may have.
Yeah, through the chair.
Councilmember Patterson, go ahead.
Thank you. So the, the example that you gave, uh, household of five, making a hundred and seven thousand dollars. They would have to bring seventy thousand dollars to the table. How much would we contribute to in that scenario?
The, it depends on the size or how many bedrooms are in the unit. Um, so of course, you still have the maximum price of, you know, the house or the property. Um, but a household of five, if we were to assume, um, what? Three bedrooms. So based on this analysis, three bedrooms, the city would be able to invest two hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars.
So even with us investing two hundred seventy thousand, they still have to bring seventy thousand to the table? Let me ask you this, can we do something, I don't know if this is the same thing just saying in a different way. Could we partner with a developer that will build ten townhomes? That at our market rate of seven fifty thousand and then we give a silent, um, silent second of two hundred thousand dollars to each one. So they're essentially, their purchase price is ha-, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know, I'm sure that their mortgage payment will be twenty-five hundred bucks a month.
Absolutely. Um, partnering with developers i- is always a, a good idea. Um, I think certain things that you may wanna keep into consideration are, um, you know, number one is what? Does the resale component look like?
Yeah, I mean, we'll notice how it's second, essentially, if they sell it within twenty years, right, they have to pay back money as a loan, otherwise. You know, as long as they wait X amount of years, i- it's a, it's a gift.
Right, yeah, and we can certainly structure the agreement with any type of uh, partner or developer. Or community housing development organization that you all have in mind. Um, and so we can certainly reach out to them, see if they're interested. Um, but yes, that, that is certainly um, an option.
So this would have been a great project for that property we have on court area, right, built in townhomes. Give two hundred thousand dollars to, to, to each buyer. Everybody's owns a home for essentially half a million dollars each. And they have to live in this community. But I, 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 I would, I don't know what the next step would be, but I think that's an idea we should explore. Uh, not necessarily specifically court area, but partnering up with a developer that's gonna build ten units. That the, the uh, the value of the property is probably gonna, you know, retail it seven fifty. And uh, you know, we contribute two hundred thousand dollars to each one. They essentially have to get a loan for half a million dollars, over half a million dollars. Payments be twenty-five hundred bucks a month. We, you know, require they stay in the property for twenty years or whatever amount of years, right? For them to have that money as free money. So uh, Mister City Manager, I don't, you know, could you look into the feasibility or something like that? And bring it to the council and the side of. Chair, that's it.
Councilmember Montero, you got anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, actually, I wanna say thank you to, to Mister Munoz and to Kimberly to bring this report. Uh, because the first thing I was so happy to see, uh, that. Uh, because the first thing I was so happy to see, uh, that the amount of the. For the, for the housing went up to seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, because five years ago was four hundred forty-four thousand dollars. That you could not buy a house in Houghton for four hundred forty-four thousand dollars, that is where a lot of people didn't apply, right? Because the houses were beyond five hundred thousand. So now it's good to see that they have gone up to seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. And um, I think, you know, the program is, i- it is a very complicated, but you know. It could be doable, like what Mr. Perez was trying to say, to partner with a developer. But this money would have to go to individual families, right? And and the fact that when you look at all these other factors, um, that. They would have to have a FICA score of seven hundred twenty, for example, to get to get a loan, uh, of a rate of two point, three point two five. Uh, and believe it or not, a lot of people that does not have seven hundred twenty on the FICA score. Especially the low-income families that are we trying to reach out. Uh, and then also the, some of them would have to have like almost about uh seventy to eighty thousand dollars. To contribute towards the uh, towards the closing costs of the down payment or whatever. So it is, I I I'm glad, you know, you guys put this report together. Because there's a lot of people out there asking if we're going to bring back the uh first-time homebuyer program. So now we have a concrete example uh to give them and say, look, if you can do this, then we will be able to help. Right, uh, so so now we we have some facts over here. But I'm glad to see that the numbers have improved, because like I said, in the past, it was terrible. Uh, and and like you said, um, the federal government, the HUD, they don't look LA County or L- LA. The price of housing over here is almost a million dollar, right? Because uh, you can see in your report, your analysis, some of the houses right on, on on Ramona track is one point one million dollar. Uh, and 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 then the COVID beyond, and then uh, the only the townhomes is the one that is coming. Close to that number between six to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So um, it could be, if we could find like Mr. Perez, that ten, ten families. That could qualify based on these guidelines, and the developer can help us out. You know, even maybe the developer can 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 put some money uh down too, to help the families move in. And to become a homebuyer, and then they can get the loan, so that will be a win-win for us. Because we want to increase a homebuyer program in 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 Houghton. Because we have seventy-two percent renters, only twenty-seven percent homeowners. So we have to increase the homeowners, and we have to figure out something how to help them. And and the, and the home program fund is is the one to go, because like you said, the CGBG is is one point two million dollars a year. It's not enough, but the home fund, it keep growing if we don't spend it. So at least will give us in one shot to help ten family this year, maybe to help another ten family in two years, you know, and go on and on. So, but thank you again for the report, and uh, Kimberly, thank you for follow-up uh on this. But this is a great report, because now I have something to tell uh some of my constituents that keep asking me, when are you guys going to bring the homebuyer program? So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues, and yeah, it's difficult to, I mean, those, the combination of things you have to do to be able to qualify. I mean, there's a reason why twenty-six applied and only two qualified, and twenty-four were denied, and. Yeah, I mean, the uh, the down payment is saving up that much, like the council member Montero mentioned, the FICA, the.
FICA score.
FICA score, you know, that's a tough, you know, I pay my bills on time, and and it's not like necessarily that the uh. I pay them all on time, but it's sometimes even if you pay on time, your FICA scores depends on a couple of other things too. That bring the uh, the number below what, you know, below seven hundred even, so it's. So uh, thank you for the information, I'm glad to hear that we have it, uh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Kimberly, because even uh about four years, five years ago, I attended training uh for the homebuyers. So I knew exactly what it was all about, so thank you very much. I think it is tough for the families, because they have to go through this process, they have to find the banks, the loans that can give them a loan, it is complicated, but thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, did we already include that in the votes, or do we need to make a motion?
It's just, what was it?
It was information only, right?
It was included.
Okay, it was included, Mr. City Clerk, I'm sorry, I should have directed that question to you.
That's fine, and just to um confirm, for item twenty-five initially, you said they were gonna speak at the following meeting. But they spoke at this meeting, so they don't need to come back, correct?
No, that was not twenty-five, twenty-five is uh telehealth.
Oh, my bad.
Item uh twenty-four COVID testing was spoken of on tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Now, thanks for the clarification and asking, uh, we have the city manager, the city attorney's consent calendar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the city attorney's office has just one item on the consent calendar. It's a claim by Natalie G. Hernandez Luque Cerro. Uh, regarding a personal injury matter, and we're recommending a denial of the claim.
I make a motion?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Oh, yes.
Lord Flex, Mayor, and Councilmembers, wedding yes.
Okay, just next, we have the city council discussion and action items, Juneteenth federal holiday, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I want to give a directive to the, to the staff to investigate the potential, the possibility for us to make that Juneteenth a holiday. For the city of Houghton, uh, because since uh it was approved on a federal level. So I want us to celebrate the Juneteenth over here in City of Houghton as a holiday. And also on that the Juneteenth day or or the weekend for us to celebrate with the fe- festival at the uh Holly Park. Okay?
Good, thank you. Councilmember Montero Patterson, item thirty-five, ad hoc committee for economic development. Um, Councilmember Patterson, you want to lead, or what do you want?
I'll let Montero lead.
Oh, come on, but you, uh, I just finished one, so you started, David.
Uh, fol- following the um, the ICSC conference that um both myself and Mr. Montero attended. Um, we are released at that conference, we made contact with um some developers. We had some good uh productive conversations with our real estate broker that that works with the city. And um, that spun off into some ongoing discussions and conversations. So we wanted to kind of discuss, uh, form an ad hoc committee, really focus on identifying things that the city can do. Uh, to attract businesses um and become more business-friendly.
Do you have the, do you have the suggestions on what the membership should be of that? With the list, m- membership, who should be the components, two council members, obviously.
Uh, so far, it's it's, yeah, me and Mr. Montero, as well as uh Mr. uh, say Christopher Beck, Mr. uh, City Manager as well.
Anybody else?
I would suggest having a staff member from the planning department.
Okay, so you have five?
Yeah, be- because, because we wanted, we want this process to be transparent, uh, Mr. Mayor. Because since uh we're talking uh uh with potential to bring business to Houghton, developments, and uh, and with a consultant. You know, we start making some progress, so we wanted to to establish these ad hocks, so it could be official, so we can bring you a report. And uh, in our conversation and where we at, so uh, it could be transparent. So when it comes down to changing uh some um laws or some ordinance or some zoning. So it's all transparent, and then we can have the confidence that all five of us are agreeable. On the changes or to the business that are coming to Houghton is fit for us. So that's basically, we want to do this uh on a transparent way.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and some more thing, like one of the things that came up in previous conversations is ideas of how to get the word out into the business community. And Hawthorne is really open for business, so some good ideas like that has come up so far, so we kind of want to formalize it. So more good ideas like that can come up, and we can provide, or you know, reports to the entire council, and hopefully we can take some action on it.
Okay, uh.
Just uh, one word of caution with two council members on this committee. Um, you cannot, council members and staff will not be, or the members will not be allowed to converse. Any item with a additional council member, because that would turn out to be three, so just a, just a word of caution.
No, that's cool.
Thank you.
So we have a, so we have Councilmember Patterson, uh, Councilmember Montero, uh, Mr. Christopher Beck, Vaughn Norris. And which, which element of the planning to to be determined?
The director.
Chair, Mayor, where's the female here? Can be all men?
Yeah, but. Well, the fem- uh, the planning department does have a a female that we can appropriate to this uh committee if needed.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and appoint uh Councilmember Patterson, Councilmember Montero, Mr. Christopher Beck. Uh, the City Manager Vaughn Norris, and the Planning Director to form the ad hoc committee, okay?
Um, thank you.
Mr. uh, City Attorney, can you note that down, please, and Mr. City Clerk, can you note that down as well? Okay, and just give us some good news, whatever you can, uh. And we'll, actually, it's good.
Oh, actually, Mr. Mayor, let me just comment on something that um, that Mr. Rubens Sanchez said. Uh, it's not about the uh, the business not coming to Houghton. It's because of the school this week have a lot of free and reduced lunches, okay? Because, that's not, that's not true, because when we uh went to Vegas, uh, uh. Mr. David Perez and I, we were talking to some uh restaurants, and some of them, uh, basically, it said, well, we want to see. Um, seventy-five thousand dollar media income, household media income, seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? For them to come to open a restaurant or or business in Houghton. So we, we have a long way to go there, because right now, you know, the media income, family media income in Houghton is about fifty-eight thousand dollars. But I'm hoping with the new census data, that maybe that will go to sixty-something. So then we will start to get the climb, that ladder that needs to be. So we need to convince some of these business owners, some of the restaurants, that it's not just the media income in Houghton. But is the surrounding community, because now we have the surrounding community that people are coming. Uh, to 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 Houghton, to go to the stadium in Inglewood, so they can stop and eat. So it's not just Houghton residents, but it's the transient people that's coming to stay in our hotels. And 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 going to shop and dine here, so that's the pitch that we need to sell to the business out there, and especially the restaurants. So it's not that because we giving free and reduced lunch to the childrens that the business not coming to Houghton. That's a wrong message that's being given out there, so thank you.
And and I really appreciate you guys uh coming up with this, uh, I also attended the, the shopping center conference over there in Las Vegas a few years ago. I believe Councilwoman uh English also went, and uh, Councilmember Patterson, you went too, like a couple of years ago, two, three years ago.
A long time ago.
About the same time I was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you went the same time I was there, uh, Councilmember Patterson, and so uh.
And I would, I would as well, I've I've been there also.
And and I, and I will confirm that is true, that there's, they're talking about the income radius, and that was a few, the income radius. And uh, I don't think they're taking into consideration, though, the, the daytime population, and not even daytime. It goes into the evening at uh SpaceX.
Yeah.
The working populace, they're not taking that into account, a couple of excuses, maybe we just need to educate those businesses. And you can form, help formulate a plan, guys.
Yeah.
And uh, but the conditions absolutely have changed. Uh, I know that some of our, the corners of our community are a little bit econom- economically challenged. But I think you have to take the sum of all things, including the daytime population at at SpaceX. It's changed since the last time we looked at it, five years ago, okay, so.
And and they, they are glad to know that Houghton is open for business, that is one thing that a lot of people said, thank you.
So yeah, we discovered some of these things, and so hopefully now that you you'll get the information and help us out.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, um, you also um need to take into account that we have a number of abandoned restaurants. And that, that's a great potential for, for businesses, if they want to come in, because they want a number, businesses always. A lot of them say they want second-generation restaurants, so they don't want to have to start from scratch. They don't want to have to start from scratch building out a um, a building that has never had a restaurant before. So the fact that we have a number of abandoned restaurants could be very, very fruitful in terms of investigating. I'm, that, that to me is something that should be very attractive to uh businesses, if they're interested in developing in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, so thank you, thank you for all your comments, and thank you guys for uh, for talking about this, okay? Councilmember Montero and Councilmember Patterson, thank you, okay?
Uh, thank you for your all this issue.
Okay, so uh, let's move on to the elected officials' reports, I think we can make it up pretty soon, before nine, if uh we kind of streamline our reports. Uh, City Treasure, uh Fallon?
Evening, everyone, uh, glad to hear about all the progress the city's making on all these so many programs going on, wow, it's a lot. Uh, I hope everyone had a wonderful new year, um, glad that police was uh looking into that trust, I think it's a great idea. Um, and interest rates are slowly tricking up because of maybe inflation. Uh, and that's good for the city, because we're stuck with fixed, fixed uh instruments. Um, although I guess we have to pay more for stuff, uh, and that's really all I I have uh to offer this evening, thank you.
Mr. City Treasure, please come inside, don't stay outside, I know you're out there in front of the sign. It's okay, it's okay for you to come inside, man. I mean, what's going on, man? All right, it's kind of cold out there, I don't know, you're just wearing a polo shirt, man, so I don't know how you're doing it, okay, thank you.
Good weather, dude.
All right, uh, Mr. City Clerk?
And it's always sunny over there, too. Awesome, uh, thank you, Mayor, happy new year to everyone, I just want to thank everyone for watching from home, um, for your public comments, and just have a few updates. Um, first of all, uh, we'll be outside, out there in front of City Hall this Saturday again, um, at ten AM. So please spread the word, um, and yeah, on average, we're giving out about two bags of fresh produce to about three to four hundred families. So again, please spread the word to our neighborhood, to our community, uh, we really want to make sure that everyone uh gets, excuse me, gets some resources. I want to thank uh Joseph Magdalene, he has been our intern for about a year. Um, he just earned his bachelor's degree from Cal State Fullerton, and he found a full-time job, so this Thursday will be his last day with us. Um, he's been a great addition to our team and really stepped up over the last couple of weeks, when we really needed some help, so, so thank you, Joseph, and congratulations. Um, and in regards to COVID nineteen, uh, as usual, for information on locations to get vaccinated and boosters. Go to vaccinate la county dot com, um, they have information on appointments and walk-ins as well. Um, I also want to take some time um to pass on my condolences to those of you, including our staff who have lost a loved one as a result of COVID nineteen. Um, at my work at the college, unfortunately, it's becoming more common to have my college students tell me that they lost somebody. So um, with that in mind, uh, again, I'll repeat, I'll echo it, uh, if you haven't, please get vaccinated, um, and that's all, so happy new year, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk, Councilmember Montero?
Oh, my God, okay, thank you. Anyway, um, happy new year to everyone, uh, we are finally made it to twenty twenty-two. So we hope this year will be the year that we'll get rid of this virus. Um, talking about the virus, so um, on Saturday, January fourteen, at from ten thirty AM to three thirty PM. Uh, the library at In Gardena is called Masao. West Staten Library is one four four three three South Crenshaw Boulevard, one four four three three South Crenshaw Boulevard in Gardena. Is going to give a COVID vaccine clinic, okay, for people experienced homeless. Uh, they can go there for um, taking the vaccine in Gardena. Uh, I want us also, um, Senators, the breakfast sent us uh an email about. Helping the homeowners that are behind their, their mortgage. So the state have put a program there that can give up to uh eighty thousand dollars to the homeowners to pay their mortgage. If they, they were behind uh last year in their, in their mortgage, okay? So they can uh just go on the state website, uh, it's called um, eh, uh. C A M mortgage relief dot org, okay, is H T T P P, you know, that's. Colon slash backslash C A mortgage relief dot org for information. Okay, so they can go there and find stuff. Um, also what's coming up on January twenty-sixth from eight to eleven PM is the homeless count. So the homeless count is coming, you know, so LA County is going to count the homeless, so the city of Houghton also is going to count the homeless that night. So if you want to help, you can go to daycountwillyou.org. Daycountwillyou.org, and you can be a volunteer uh to sign up for homeless count on that night, okay? I want to say thank you to Vaughn and to the Kimberly and to. I wanna say thank you to Vaughn and to the Kimberly and to all the head departments, you know, for the, the, a good report on the, uh, that the departments accomplished, uh, for, in December, was a lot of work, even with the skeleton crew. Because like, uh, um, Doctor Jimenez said, there are a lot of people, uh, being out sick, uh, so, uh, we wish them well. But we accomplished a lot of stuff, so please read the report. And, and thank you, Kimberly, for the housing, uh, report on all these programs, the, the housing vouchers, the emergency housing voucher, the emergency business assistant, all these programs that's coming, uh, to the City of Hawthorne. So thank you for, to keep us informed. And the other thing that I want us, the staff, to look at is the, the top priorities for the, for the governor Newsom, new budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, okay? So that is, um, is a top priority for the cities to get investment and money from the government Newsom proposed budget. And they have some, a lot of money there, uh, for homeless, for housing, for economic development. So we need to tap into that, and maybe Senator Steve Bradford can help us out. Remember, he said, just ask? Uh, so we're gonna ask. So, uh, so I have a copy of those, uh, ten priorities that can help us out bring money to Hawthorne. Um, I just wanna say thank you again to all of our constituents, to, to keep faith. And please stay safe. If you're not vaccinated, I'll encourage you to get your vaccine. I have my boost, my third booster shot, and if they come the fourth one, I'm gonna take it. Uh, thanks God I haven't got sick. Uh, but we know we have a lot of colleagues out there that, uh, having experienced COVID nineteen. And then, like, I have two cousins that have COVID back in Europe, so, uh, it hits home. So please vaccinate or, you know, stay safe and don't take no chances. So God bless and good night.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much. Councilmember Ray English?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I just want to, uh, go back since we were out, uh, December fourteenth was the last council meeting. Uh, thank you to everyone that sent all your lovely Christmas cards, uh, Christmas wishes. I appreciate that greatly from many of you, Senator and, uh, various organizations and groups. Thank you for that. And also come, some gifts that were left on my desk, some I didn't even know who they came from because I didn't leave any note, but I appreciate that greatly. Uh, I wanna thank all those that also participated in our toy giveaway. That was a great success. Uh, folks are still talking about it, and it's something that we hope to do every year. And I'm not going away from giving away turkeys, Operation Gobble, anything that we could do to help our residents here in Hawthorne, especially during these pressing times. And I look forward to also, um, working along with vaccinations and testing. That's very important. Uh, and, and I too, uh, councilmember Montero, I had three cousins pass away in San Antonio, uh, family members of mine, so it hits home. Um, thank you to all of our, uh, department heads putting on our agenda this evening. Lots of great discussions to be had. Uh, look forward to a productive year, an aggressive year, that, uh, we're gonna move and hopefully bring some additional businesses to our city. Uh, I know that there's questions with regards to, um, you know, our landlords having, uh, concerns and, and needing some assistance with regards to, um, landlord, uh, tenant, um, concerns. And so there's a whole outline of information that was provided, uh, California Tenant Relief Guide. There was, uh, legislative, uh, bill text, uh, amendment, bill at fourteen-eighty-two. And then there's also the Fair Housing Rights Center with information for, uh, there's also self-help for, with the courts, uh, dot la dot gov regarding evictions. You can contact, um, Legal Aid Foundation, Benzetic Legal Services. Those are just some legal services that you could inquire based on, uh, need. More importantly, um, um, your, your income on whether or not you would be able to receive per bono assistance for an attorney to assist you with, uh, recouping some of, some of your tenants', um, monies that are due. But, uh, look forward, uh, mayor and councilmembers, for, uh, great council meetings ahead, bringing services and programs to our city and working hard to bring, uh, revenue, additional revenue to our city. That's always something, uh, we need to do. And it's just our first meeting of the year, and so, um, happy new year, new year to everyone. Uh, stay safe, stay vaccinated or not, it's, it's a choice. But, um, thank you, and I think that should do it for the most part. Thank you to everybody that participated in council today and our speakers. Appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. So, uh, go ahead, uh, go ahead, council, uh, Mayor Protem Valentine?
Thank you. Um, so I just wanna say thank you to, um, all the department heads for all of your hard work in bringing all of these, um, agenda items to us. Thank you, uh, Robert Kim, for that wonderful presentation on, um, giving us the, uh, the options between, uh, whether to have a charter city or no charter city, or, or leave it as a general law city. It gave us really good information that, uh, that we can use in making that decision. So I wanna just talk about Hawthorne Business Expo twenty-two, our seventh year, and it is coming up. Hawthorne Business Expo twenty-twenty-two is two weeks away. And just like our businesses, we've had to pivot because of COVID nineteen. We will be holding the event outdoors on both days, January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. We want you to enjoy the great program we have planned and to stay safe. On both days, the event is from ten AM to three PM, Jan- January twenty-fifth is day one, featuring a panel discussion on the theme, revise, rebuild, and reconnect. In the afternoon, you can look forward to at least seven seminars, all featuring leaders in their own field, sharing their expertise with you on how to expand and improve your business. Day two is the all-day business exhibition, which will feature at least fifty businesses, providing you a tremendous opportunity to display your products and services and to network with other businesses. This is Hawthorne's first big event in twenty-twenty-two, our centennial year. The event is free to the public, and there will be raffle prizes. We are looking forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you. That's all I have. Good night.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Are there any go-bags before I end?
I'd like to say some words.
You didn't call David.
I would like to speak.
No, I didn't, I didn't. I'm so sorry. Go ahead. No, go ahead, councilmember Patterson, I'm sorry. I, I, I had written this down. I didn't check. I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna thank the staff for your hard work. I know with, uh, spike in the, the, uh, variant in, uh, COVID, there's been a lot of people that's been sick. And, um, I know a lot of people have been sick, not just with COVID. Like, you know, I came down with a cold myself last week. I tested three times to make sure it wasn't COVID. Wasn't COVID, but still was sick, though. So, um, I know people, our family, you know, all over the country has been sick for the last couple of weeks, and friends, and had some death in my family as well due to COVID. So it, this is, uh, this is wild times. And so I just wanna commend all, all, all work of the, of the staff. And, uh, I just wanna thank the, the community for being engaged and paying attention and communicating to us what's important to you. Uh, so, uh, I wanna wish everybody a happy new year. Hope everybody had a great Christmas. A couple of things that I want to ask of the city manager. Uh, I was, uh, exiting the center median on Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, where there's, there's parking in the middle of the street. And I felt very uncomfortable when I was exiting that center median onto Hawthorne Boulevard. It seems, you know, dangerous, at that location where I was at. I don't remember what street it was, could be, you know, I'd be guessing if I threw out a street. But could we look at, at that, look at those exits, um, you know, out of the center median onto Hawthorne Boulevard? Um, I was going north at the time. I don't know if that might help find which one I, I was exiting, but it just didn't really seem like, um, as I was exiting, uh, I would have to get into the street to see if there's any cars coming. And at that time, you know, I could obviously run into somebody. So I don't know if there's something that we can do to, uh, look at, look at that and see if we make that a little bit more safe. Um. Also, could you provide me a little bit of a report about our, our ARP move, ARP money, or ARPA money? I'm not sure what the acronym is, but that COVID relief money that the city has received. Um, you know, total amount of money obviously we've received, how much we've, um, designated to, uh, be, you know, up to our discretion. And how much we've spent of that so far, and how much is earmarked for future spend. Um, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have a big picture look on how we're gonna spend that money. That's not just kind of first come, first served, that we have some kind of strategy for how that money's gonna be allocated over this next number of years. Um, and also, I would like to suggest that we, uh, support a nonprofit organization and who, where that could hold homebuyer education courses for the community. Um, some of my fellow councilmembers talked about how, you know, there's a lot of steps to, to buying some real estate. And, you know, if somebody's not done it before, it can be very overwhelming. And, uh, I'm not saying that there's not educational resources that are out there, but I'd love for us to be able to sponsor some educational resources and courses that teach about credit. You know, I, as a financial advisor, I consult a lot of my clients in credit and credit repairs, a lot of things that, that aren't commonly known when it comes to building one's credit, uh, when it comes to, you know, buying a home, all the different options. All the different people you gotta talk to, whether it be your mortgage broker, your real estate broker, title, you know, blah, 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 escrow. Um, you know, all these different terms and stuff like that. And so let, let's definitely support the community in being able to, um, increase their, their knowledge on that subject, so it doesn't seem so scary. Um, I, I really believe that more people, there are a lot of people who can go and buy something, they just don't know that they can. Um, and so education is key. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, councilmember Patterson, do you have a, do you have a, uh, nonprofit in mind for that? Because that sounds like a really excellent idea. Or, or do you want them to research it, our staff?
I mean, I, 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 we'll probably, you know, leave it to staff to kind of research it. I mean, I know some nonprofits in the city that I, you know, I can suggest, but, um, I, you know, it doesn't really matter which one it is, as long as, you know, one that can get the job done.
So that's, I, I think that's a really neat idea, um, top-level type of information that just gives everybody the steps, right? Something like that, or even more detailed information. Uh, however, whatever the scope, I think the council comes up with there, you have, or you can suggest, right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I, I'll talk to the city manager in more detail by identifying some potential nonprofits and some subject matter and all that stuff, yeah.
That's a good idea. I really appreciate that one. And then, uh, we had, uh, maybe some financial, uh, solv- financial repair workshops as well, or something? That even expands the scope of this thing, the home buying and then that other stuff, so.
Yeah, well, I've been, I mean, these are all things I, I like talking about for free anyway, but, um, you know, I also I'd love to support in whatever way that I can support.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember English, did you have a go-back?
Yeah, I, 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 I was thinking of Lori Gray in the city of Los Angeles. She has a nonprofit organizations and is, um, is very instrumental in, in helping, uh, first-time homebuyers and has been very successful. So I look forward to moving, uh, sending that information over to, to Vaughn to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Go-bags? Okay, good. So, um, I think the ad hoc committee that are my councilmember colleagues, Mister, uh, councilmember Montero and councilmember Patterson, uh, are going to be, uh, com- cus- components of, is a very good one. And, uh, the city of Hawthorne, um, has grown economically, and a lot of businesses have moved, but there is even more room for growth. Um, Imperial Highway being a very, uh, very special location where we can make sure that that grows even more than what it is right now. Some of those storefronts could use a little bit of, uh, uh, repair, and maybe there's other options for those locations. So I know we have the hotel group over there that, uh, that has some of those hotels, and those are definitely becoming an option for the people who do not wanna stay on Century Boulevard and some of the other locations. There, uh, the business had gone down because of COVID, and now it's climbing. So, uh, it's right there next to the metro station, so a lot of, uh, a lot of foreign travelers, you can sometimes go and see foreign travelers jogging up Imperial Highway. You never would have seen that, you know, walking with their families up and down, getting something to eat in the location. So there's a lot of opportunities, especially where that Mexican restaurant is on the corner, which used to be a red onion. And I don't know if people knew that. It used to be historic, uh, historically, uh, twenty, thirty years ago, it used to be a red onion. Um, if some of you guys remember the Red Onion brands. And then, uh, Cockatoo Inn was there. So there was a, it was a really nice location, so looking forward to see what ideas come out, gentlemen. Uh, the different applications, and I think these, uh, these workshops kind of go, uh, in, in conjunction with what I was going to say that are, sometimes people, we have all these offerings, all this money and these grants that we wanna give the community, but they don't make it through because they're, they don't provide the necessary information. Yeah, so it's, a lot of, a lot of it has to be, is the, has to do with organization, keeping your stuff, uh, your records, uh, uh, provi- making copies of this, making copies of that. And so maybe part of one of those workshops could be how to organize your documentation for your, you know, all your finances and, uh, keeping everything in order. And that way, some of these applications that they'd be making would be much easier because they would have one central location to find this information. Unfortunately, sometimes you don't, you know, you're looking for stuff you don't provide, and you're hoping that you'd submit something incomplete and that it'll kind of go through the process, but, um, as, uh, Kimberly has said, you know, we, we, we need that paperwork because the federal government, state government, whoever subsidizing this, needs to see that. So, um, maybe we can tie that into these workshops that, uh, were mentioned. I wanna commend the city clerk's office for, uh, your efforts out there with your volunteers, with you, uh, uh, sinister city clerk, on providing the, uh, vegetables, the edible, edibles that you have been giving to the community, um, vegetables, fruits, et cetera. And, uh, you've had, have had, it's been a lot of people lined up benefiting from that, so, uh, glad to see that you're continuing doing that. We do have churches that are still giving out, uh, food, uh, they have food pantries out there that are giving out food. Uh, Del, uh, Delar Baptist is one of those, and I commend them for continuing to do that and helping the community. So, uh, I'll just have to say, I know that, uh, our city, our state officials, our representatives, um, are offering certain types of grants when it comes to home buying, when it comes to mortgage repayment, et cetera. And I know that one of our recent, uh, representatives from the state was here recently. But I did not hear one word on SB nine and the reasoning as to why they supported that, knowing that a great majority of the cities are against the government intruding on local control. Okay? Uh, I think, uh, all these other things are very, uh, nice, and it's, uh, it's gonna help a certain amount of people. But I think some of the decisions that they're making up there, in particular SB nine, are going to hurt a hell of a lot more people than they're helping. So I would like to, uh, challenge them to come and give us the reasoning as to why they supported this. And to listen to what our conversations are here to formulate their ideas. So that's pretty much it. Um, I think, uh, we had a very good presentation. Um, and I, I just wanna highlight one more time of that, the cannabis, uh, the cannabis licensing project and laying out the cannabis plan that the voters supported, you know, with the majority, in, in addition here in the city of Hawthorne. They voted, uh, had a majority of the people in Hawthorne that voted for it. Um, I know there's differing ideas on cannabis, but the voters have spoken, okay? And so we, uh, we are following through with the will of the voters, majority rules, fifty plus one. Um, the time is not now to start challenging the, uh, the integrity of the cannabis industry. Uh, the time should have been at that previous election where you should have mobilized yourself, okay? Whether you're excited or not, the city's obligated to have a very responsible program that's transparent, that's, uh, formal, that's legal, and that follows all the rules as to not, uh, with all the necessary measures, maybe, uh, to not expose the youth maybe, or other things, things that, uh, people are concerned about. And that all the bad players are kept out of this whole process. All these people that are lurking around, trying to, uh, cause trouble, whether getting licenses and they're like, uh, dark operations. Uh, we just want good players coming into the city and following the rules, paying their taxes, and, uh, just being a, a positively contributing member of our community. So, thank you for our councilmember colleagues, uh, that talked about that, uh, contract with IJAMA today. Is there anything else? If there's nothing else from staff, I do want to mention that a lot of people have passed away from COVID. Uh, and, uh, we, we've heard the numbers, a lot of people are getting the Omicron virus. So I like to close the meeting for those individuals. And in addition, I would like to close the meeting for all those celebrities that we grew up with that have been passing away, names that have been, uh, coming up. Uh, it is, it is kind of like, it's, it's crazy. Uh and it's kind of like, it's it's crazy, I mean, I didn't know the uh, I just heard that like the captain from the Love Boat passed away last year.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, I mean, right? I'll name some of the people that passed away that I've took note, Jackie Mason, some of you guys remember Jackie Mason was the comedian. Uh Norm MacDonald from uh Saturday Night Live or Sa- yeah. Okay, passed away, you remember he was a comedian that always popped up on that, Bismarcky for all the. You know, all the, all the guys out there and gals that grew up in the eighties and remember him from the nineties or whatever. Uh DJ Thomas, the guy that sang uh Raindrops Keep Falling On My Head, passed away. Betty White passed away, Sidney Poitier passed away and Bob Saget passed away like two days ago.
Vicente Fernandez.
Vicente Fernandez as well, of course. So for those, I mean, those are important people and all those people that uh. I don't wanna say that, but these are also people that passed away, so men, you know, all, they're all. Important uh individuals in our lives that we need to just uh recognize, so. Um I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence and prayer and we'll end the meeting after that, please bow your heads. Okay, gentlemen and ladies, um let's uh make sure everybody gets tested out there, make sure everybody gets vaccinated. Uh little by little, you be comfortable and know that it's it's for a good reason that you should get vaccinated, okay? Thank you to staff for all your efforts, I'm seeing a lot of great things happening, we all are. Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, good night.